I didn't know that until our acting city attorney said that it couldn't be in an executive session and then cited it. If you need to, I could read what he.
The meeting still wasn't about an elected official.
Okay. Dugan, do you want to answer the question of why you gave that as a reason why it couldn't be in an executive session then?
I was just reading out what was in under the statute.
Regardless, I view this as a non-issue. I think we all can agree to conclude the special meeting and move forward with the study session. Is that correct?
No, I'd like him to answer his question.
I'm sorry?
I mean, Dugan's the one who brought that up, so, and since Rick seems confused about it, I would like him to answer the question.
I don't know, no, there's no confusion on my end.
I've asked him to answer why he brought that up, that you couldn't have the executive session for.
Because personnel matters, it states here, does not include discussions of any member of a local public body and the elected official, the appointment of any person to fill a vacancy in a local public body or elected office, or discussion of personnel policies that do not require discussion of particular employees.
That's what made it seem as if it were about an elected official because of what he just said.
Fair enough. Thank you for the clarification. Again, what I'll do is close the special meeting. Are we out of that now?
We're recording.
We're recording for the study session? Okay, so I'll go ahead and kick that off. Welcome everybody to the city council study session. Our first agenda item of the evening is CDA-PE permit limitation review for the Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant. Our wastewater treatment plant manager, Dennis Stowe, is present to discuss the permit limitation review. Good evening, Mr. Stowe.
Good evening.
And we brought some friends. Evening, welcome. If you guys could introduce yourselves, we'll return the favor here.
This is Mary Gardner. She's our environmental compliance, basically, officer.
My hunch is that you have to have the mic really close.
A little closer, yeah.
Because streaming doesn't work as well for those listening.
I've seen you guys.
They can hear you, but they can't necessarily.
So if I back away from the microphone, you'll know why I'm backing away. This is Mary Gardner. She's in charge of our regulatory compliance division, and she's been working on various and sundry water quality issues with the Water Quality Control Division, including the permit that we're going to be going over tonight. And this is Sarah Reeves with Brown and Caldwell. They bring a lot of expertise on regulatory matters and water quality issues, and we're relying on them to review our draft permit and help us develop comments for the state.
Excellent.
And Dennis Stowe, the plant manager.
Thank you for being here. I would return the favor, but I realize now we've got these handy name markers, so maybe we can save a minute on that. Thank you again.
Sure. So we're here to give you a briefing on the differences between our existing permit and the draft permit that we have received from the Water Quality Control Division. Under the Clean Water Act, wastewater utilities and plants are required to operate under a permit that's issued by either the EPA or the state in which they're located. And in Colorado, Colorado actually issues the permits through the Water Quality Control Division, and they do all the enforcement and monitoring of how we are operating our facility. The permit that we receive sets limits based on technology, so technological requirements are in our permit, as well as water quality-based limitations. The limitations are designed to protect the South Platte River with the uses that are on the river, which are recreation, drinking water, and aquatic life. Our permit has a wide range of limitations in the permit, beginning with BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand, and total suspended solids as some routine technological limits, as well as metals, ammonia, nutrients, bacteria, temperature, and other issues that are regulated for different uses on the river. So where we are in the renewal process is in the public review process. The state normally grants 30 days for public comments to be received on draft permits. We, I would like to take credit for extending that comment period to 60 days, but they were pretty agreeable to giving us 60 days because our permit is one of the most complex in the state. So we have that 60 days to provide comments to the Water Quality Control Division, and those comments are due on September 22nd, and we're working on meeting that deadline. So the issues that are different in the draft permit that we will be providing comments on start off with nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen compounds that have an adverse effect on water bodies in the state, leading to eutrophication, algae blooms, and that sort of thing. And we were expecting this requirement to be in our permit. The state has a specific regulation that limits phosphorus and nitrogen, and we knew that was going to be in the permit, so that wasn't expected. The focus is on phosphorus treatment. The requirements will require us to enter into a study, equipment design, system design, and then construction over a five-year compliance schedule. The cost of this new requirement, actually, we did estimates several years ago, so they're a little out of date now, but to install equipment at the plant to meet these requirements will be approximately $8 million. So one of the first things we need to do when we get a draft permit is to update that cost estimate to make sure that we are on track with the right cost. So that is, and it's a pretty straightforward regulation that requires complying with a limit of 15 milligrams per liter of nitrogen and 1 milligram per liter of phosphorus. So it's really clear, and it's a state regulation. The next item is something that we weren't expecting, which is called total inorganic nitrogen. This is a drinking water standard that is applied to the river, so downstream water suppliers can use the water safely. We currently have daily limits that we are required to comply with. We were expecting the state to continue with the current limitations in our permit. They decided that the current limitations were not protective enough, so they have lowered the number significantly. Our lowest number right now is about 23 milligrams per liter, and they've dropped that number down to 15. They have used a very simple calculation to determine that number, so we think it's very conservative, very low, and we're going to be requesting that we be given some time to resurrect a model that we have used on the river before, so we can get a permit limitation that is more in line with the reality. So we'll be making that request in our comments. So that would be, again, on this one, be an extended compliance schedule. If the state goes ahead with the number that they have now in our permit, that would be an additional $10 to $15 million. So it's an important issue as far as we're concerned. The next issue is temperature. We've been working on, actually, Mary's been, Mary and Sarah have been working on a temperature issue for the past several years. The state has a regulation that everybody agrees is bad, and we can't comply with it. So what we've done is we've been successful at correcting part of that regulation for our facility, but not in total. We have been successful, though, at delaying imposition of the rest of that temperature regulation on our permit, so we don't expect anything more to come of permit limitations for temperature until 2030. We'll be continuing to work on the issue, however, because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to try and cool 25 to 30 million gallons of water a day for a couple of weeks out of the year. Yes.
What temperature? What temperature are we at now, and what are they requiring?
That would be.
So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the standard is set up for a three-month period each season, and then there's an immediate change within a minute from, it's seasonal, so it's winter, spring, summer, fall, and what happens is, they call it a top hat, so as soon as, basically, one second is over, the next season goes into place and it becomes a warmer temperature from winter to spring. So what we look at is the normal temperature that goes from air temperature in Colorado. You know that some winters are very warm, some springs are a little bit chillier, and there is no, there's no top hat in nature. And so what we've been working on, I know this doesn't exactly answer your question, but what we've been working on is a more normal gradual change in temperature that follows the natural air temperature in Colorado, and a lot of it has to do with runoff, spring runoff from the mountains, and sometimes we have two of those in one, you know, in one season, basically. So that, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, though. Okay.
What it comes down to is what we have to do is cool the effluent by three or four degrees for a couple of two-week periods. So that's the temperature difference that we're talking about. One of the things we'll have to do in response to the discharge permit is recalculate the local limits for the industrial pretreatment program for both the cities of Inglewood and Littleton. With different values, limitations in our permit, we need to recalculate what industries can discharge to our facility. That'll take us some time. The state has given us a year. We don't believe a year is enough to do those calculations, get them approved, and then get them into ordinance, and that would be for both cities. We try to keep the two cities' programs pretty consistent, so working with two city councils takes a little more time to keep things consistent and moving forward in the same direction. So we're asking for more time on that local limit calculation. The state has implemented, well, one new practice and is taking away one that we believe we should retain in our permit. The concept of a reserve capacity is the state's attempt to allow for future growth in discharges in Denver to the South Platte River. They have added, they have actually added 10% to our hydraulic capacity in their calculations to determine our effluent limits. That results in a little bit more stringent limit, but we don't believe the Water Quality Control Division has the authority to do that, and we're preparing comments along those lines to submit to the division requesting removing that reserve capacity. We believe we will have a lot of support from other utilities in the area on that issue because we don't believe the state has authority. In our current permit, we have some flow tiers. There are three tiers of maximum capacity with 50 MGD, then 42 and 34 million gallons per day. When we operate in those capacity ranges, that gives us a little more flexibility in complying with some lower effluent limitations. The state wants to take that flow tier out of our permit. We believe it's some flexibility that we should retain, so we will be requesting retaining those flow tiers. Some of the other smaller changes to the permit, copper is a standard because of aquatic life. Copper is toxic. If you throw copper sulfate into water with algae, it'll kill the algae. We have a, what's called an alternatives analysis that shows, that had a result of a limitation of about 30 micrograms per liter of copper. The state wants to change their mind on what they approved several years ago, so they're lowering that number down to 9.5. We believe that puts us in jeopardy of violating our permit, so we'll be negotiating with the division on raising that limit to something above 10. Ammonia, again, is toxic to aquatic life. We have some pretty significant limitations on ammonia in our current permit. The state has done a slight recalculation. The numbers are a little bit lower, so we're not expecting any compliance problems with that or any additional equipment to meet that ammonia limitation that is a little bit lower. We will be reviewing what they did to make sure they made that calculation correct, but it's, right now, we don't, we're not going to request any change in that. The next issue is uranium. It's a drinking water standard. The drinking water standard is 30 micrograms per liter, and this is a new limitation for us. The state has required us to monitor for uranium over the past five to seven years, and we've done that, but they want to put in the limit of, the drinking water limit of 30 micrograms per liter. We don't believe that they should be doing that, and we'll be making comments in that regard to remove the uranium limit from our permit. Chlorine is what we use to disinfect the wastewater, to kill bacteria before it gets into the South Platte River. We currently have a daily limit for chlorine, and again, that's aquatic life. Chlorine is pretty toxic to aquatic life, so we have a very, very low limit, and that's on a daily basis. The state is proposing to add on to that limit by including a different averaging period for chlorine. They've given us the choice of a two-year period or a 30-year averaging period. We believe the 30-day averaging period is probably a better, a better limit to go with, and we'll be requesting that monthly limit. It won't have any change into our current operation to meet that monthly limit. Toxicity is on here because we actually do try to measure the toxicity of our effluent as it goes into the river. We have, we test two separate organisms. You'd be glad to know that one is the Fathead Minnow and the other is Seriodaphnia, so you can take that home tonight, and while you're, I guess Eric won't be bringing it home. It's called, it's called whole effluent toxicity, and basically, our current limitations are for acute standards, and that basically means that those two organisms live or die. If they live, we pass. If they, if they die, we fail. And so far, we've been passing that consistently. We don't have any permit violations on that one. The state wants to add on to that chronic limitations. That's longer-term effects on aquatic life. That's growth and reproduction. So do the fish and the Seriodaphnia, do they grow? Are they happy where they are living? And do they reproduce and have offspring like they should? And if they do that, then we pass the test. If they don't, if they're not happy and something goes wrong with them, they get grumpy or whatever, then we fail the test. So far, we have been running that test also, and we've been passing that consistently, so we don't believe there's any problem with accepting this limitation in the permit. One of the things we try to do on these briefings is keep the information the same between the Littleton City Council and the Inglewood City Council. I've been told Littleton is interested in pharmaceuticals and personal care products, PPCPs, contaminants of emerging concern, that's easier for me to say. Those are basically endocrine disruptors that we can, that can be in, basically, the wastewater that comes out of homes, and we get that. Our plant is not designed to treat those chemicals, and right now, there's a lot of, most of the work is being done on how to measure them, determine what the impact is, if any, and it's a whole suite of chemicals that we really aren't involved with yet. So we don't have any of those limitations in our permit. Colorado is working on one that's called nonalfinol. It's in cleaning products, and we don't have that in our permit, so we won't be dealing with endocrine disruptors, PPCPs, for the duration of the permit, which is typically five to seven years. There are some positive results. We have fewer parameters to monitor. The state has given us some relaxed monitoring requirements in some areas. We do have reporting requirements instead of some numeric limits for several parameters. Again, I mentioned, just mentioned the monitoring frequencies have been reduced in some places. The main temperature requirements are not effective until 2031, and we thought that was a, we believe that was a very good thing to get accomplished. And we were looking at the possibility of having to remove nitrate now as part of the nutrient control issue. The state has given us a compliance schedule that ties nitrate removal to phosphorus removal, so we have five years. And just so you know, that represented about a $300,000 to $500,000 a year cost. So we're avoiding that cost over the next five years by not having to remove nitrate. So the next steps are to actually get our comments together and get them submitted to the division by the 22nd. The Water Quality Control Division typically takes two to three months or more to respond to those comments. They basically go into a dark room where nobody talks to them, you can't call them, and they develop their responses to comments and then make any changes they believe necessary in the permit, and then the permit is issued. So we will probably be back to you in several months on the results of that effort on the part of the division. We don't know what the result is going to be, but that is when we'll be back and let you know what the final decision of the division is. So that's it in a nutshell, and we can try to answer questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Questions from council? Start with Steve.
In one spot, you mentioned the state's not going to allow for excess capacity. Are we talking about how much you can treat?
No. What they've done is added 5, they've added 10% to our treatment capacity. So instead of doing calculations based on 50 MGD, they're doing calculations based on 55 MGD.
And MGD stands for?
I'm sorry, million gallons a day.
Okay. So we can, we can go above what we're doing right now, or?
No. This is totally to account for other dischargers in Denver that would be discharging wastewater to the river itself.
So how does this affect us?
The limits that we get in our permit are actually lower than what we would get if they just left our capacity at 50 MGD. So we're actually losing a little bit on our effluent limitations. They're lower, a little more difficult to meet.
And when you say effluent, you're talking about other than clean water, right?
Stuff we're putting back.
It's the stuff we're putting back into the South Platte River.
Okay, so they're lowering how much water we can put back into the?
Not the amount of water, it's the amount of chemicals in the water.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, now I understand.
Other questions?
What is the effluent right now for us? What are we, what are we processing?
Right now, we are discharging anywhere between 23 and 25 million gallons a day.
Okay. So we're at half?
Yes.
We're at half of what the capacity is, so whether they raise it to 50 or 55, we're so far, we're not close to using the capacity, and we're not in danger of that?
Correct.
Okay. And then, there were a lot of comments on here, I mean, because there's not, well, don't we usually have a bi-cities meeting for these kind of things, so that where both councils are meeting at the same time?
We have a joint meeting that's supposed to be held once a year, and we're in the process of arranging that meeting now.
Okay.
The reason we're having the meetings now is because of the limited time for the public comment period, and we wanted to make sure that we updated both councils on what was included in the draft.
For the permit. And then, you have a lot of information in here where you're making comments that it requires study and design and construction, and there are going to be a little bit more information in that. Are you providing them more information for the permit and what that study is, what that design, what possible construction, what you're looking for? I mean, I guess I was expecting more of a kind of document of what you would be giving to them and what the permit requirements were in there. That's what I've been used to in the past. So, I mean, I was, this is nice, and it's a pretty PowerPoint, but it doesn't kind of give the information that you guys used to before, so is that available?
Well, it will be when the division finalizes their comments, finalizes our permit. We've been, our current permit expired two years ago, so we've been operating under an administrative extension. So we haven't been privy to what the division's doing, so we don't, we don't know what they were going to put in the permit. Now we have the draft permit, we know what, we know how to proceed, and we'll be putting together, again, updated cost estimates and putting together the financing packages and coming back to councils.
And if the permit's going to go ahead and include study, design, and construction, then how do we know what the cost is of what they're putting into it?
Because we will be putting that package together when the final permit is issued, so we know what the requirements are.
Okay, and we'll see that?
Yes.
For the bi-cities plant meeting, then?
That's, we're trying to get that meeting done by October, but we won't have the state, the state won't have the permit done by October.
But you'll have what you gave to the state on those issues available for us. All the information you gave to the state regarding this will be available to us for that meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks. Awesome.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you for the presentation, and I think we've done this before where we haven't had all the joint. We've had one briefing and they've gotten another, so this isn't out of the ordinary. But my question is, what do you, what do you think the state might do on these requests for time expansions? And if they don't, what is our second plan? What are you going to do?
Well, we're pretty hopeful that they will accept our comments.
You are? And you think they will because of past record of this? I mean, you've done this before where we've had to ask for extensions, and are you hopeful?
Yes, and we've provided additional, additional information to the state, and they are quite willing to accept additional information.
Yeah, that's, I guess my question is if they're not reasonable, then what do we do?
Well, if, if you'll take the real simple answer, when we get the final permit, we will evaluate what the state decided to put in the permit, and then we have the opportunity, if we don't like what's in the permit, to request an adjudicatory hearing.
That's the next step, then, if it doesn't go?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Thank you for being here this evening, unless you've got something else to add here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to agenda item two, that is our 2017 budget highlight review. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel is here to present and discuss the 2017 budget highlight review. Evening, everybody. Thank you again for being here. This is Rinkel.
Mr. Mayor, Council. So tonight, we have the 2017 proposed budget overview.
Are we doing a PowerPoint?
Okay. Okay. Just have to know what button I'm pushing. There it is. We'd like to recap the priority-based budgeting methodology, give you a high-level overview of that again real quickly, and relate that to our budget, and with that, show you what opportunities it provides us. We're going to then take you through a waltz through the 2007 proposed budget and demonstrate the priority-based budgeting tool that we call the RAD tool. That stands for Resource Alignment Diagnostic Tool. And then I'd like to remind you that after this overview, next Monday, we'll be going through the individual budgets in deeper detail. So this is basically just the overview. So on the priority-based budgeting, we have the fiscal health, which has the basic assumptions of you spend within your means, you stay healthy, you establish your, and maintain your reserves, just all the basics. And then we've got the fiscal wellness, is how do you go forward? You have to identify what you're doing, you have to define what the results are, and then align your programs to the results. We'll bring you to the target page, page 18 up on the slides for, I think, if you're looking at the individual presentation. We have this circle. It talks about the what, the how, and the why that we're doing the priority-based budgeting. And the what is what we do and what's the highest priority, what's the highest improvement. The how we do it is, how are we going to achieve the results? How much is it going to cost us? And the why, which is the center, is why are we doing this? Why are we here? Do we understand our residents? Are we making sure we've got their needs considered? So getting to that target, we've got party results that we've set up for the city, and we've got eight of them here, the last one being governance. The other seven relate to community results, making sure that we've got a thriving and vibrant community, sustainable natural, effective mobility, and reliable infrastructure, all those good things. Yes, ma'am?
So are these in priority order, or they're just all of them are priorities?
They're all priorities. They're what we should be doing to maintain the community and provide the services that we need to provide.
Okay, thank you.
They're all important. So moving to the next page, what that does is gives you a quick look at all of our funds and then just our general fund. And you can see from the pie charts that the community results, the governance results are very similar between the two, and that most of what we do is related to community results. Okay, the next slide is a little bit more colorful. These are the community results, and kind of tiny to read up there, but it's the same ones we saw on the other page, thriving and vibrant local economy, we've got a sustainable natural environment and so forth. You'll notice that the largest contributors to this are, the dark blue is the fire, then the green next to it is the police, and I'm looking at the top bar. The turquoise bar is utilities, and the smaller green on the far end is wastewater. Now, I mentioned the wastewater in that bar because you notice it's larger than some of the others. What we have found is we've gone through looking at our programs compared to the co- What we have found as we've gone through looking at our programs compared to the, to the results, is that a lot of these programs cross all of, or many of the different results we want to have. So you may have something that's in, you know, environment, let's say the fire, I mean, they're thriving and vibrant, and they're across a lot of these, and a lot of their programs are leveraged that way. Now, the next page is a little busy, it's got all the numbers that support the bars on the prior page. What I'd like to point out is you notice there's no totals to the right of this page, and that's because if we were to add them up, it would add up way more than what we've got for budget, and that's because, again, we've leveraged those programs across several different results. So if you've got something that's 100,000, and it provides you with an attractive and engaged inclusive environment, neighborhood, you'll see that there, and you'll also see that 100,000 in an orderly, well-managed growth and development, as an example. So if we move to the next slide, it gives you a little bit higher level view of the different community results, the dollars that are in those buckets, and you notice that's almost 246,000, or $1 million. Our real budget in this area is $73 million. So we've leveraged those dollars three ways, in a lot of the cases. And we'll look at the governance results. We have units in here that don't touch on the community that well, but they do support how well we run the city. Across the top, the little peach-colored bar is your city attorney, then you've got your CMO office, is the dark blue, the green is finance and HR combined, the burgundy, testing my color knowledge here, the burgundy is IT, and the purple at the end is public And you can see they're very heavily and very fairly even distributed across the results that we wanted in governance. Again, the numbers that support the bars, and you'll notice at the top, here's a real good visual, the city attorney office, we've got $539,000, and you can see that in several of the categories. Again, a little higher level view, and you can see we leveraged these dollars, again, three ways, three times. Budget of 10, 10 million ends up being over 35 million of, of results that we get. Whoops, too far, too fast, come on back, there we go. So when we looked at our programs, we evaluated them on five basic attributes, making sure if they were mandated, relied on the city versus other people we could rely on, was there a change in demand for these programs, did we recover costs, and what portion of the, the community or organization was served? So if we look what was mandated, you can see that we've got a lot of dollars there, especially in what we would call best practice and standards. So the opportunity that this provides for us is to take a look at these dollars, and I'm going to start with the priority two, zero, and one on the far left. If you look at those categories, the opportunities that we have are to evaluate those programs, and take a look at the ones that aren't highly mandated, see if we've got alternate options to provide those services. The ones at the top, in the score of four and three, take a look at those and say, are we providing more than we need to? Maybe the mandate isn't that high, maybe we're going over and above and beyond, we don't need to. So we'll be looking at those opportunities as well. If you look on, at the reliance on the city to provide these programs, I think the opportunities here are in the two, one, and zero category again, where we look and we say, can we partner? Can we move this to private? Does that make more sense? And if you take a look at category three, you might ask the question, is, is this the best way to provide the service? Do we have other ways we could provide it, rather than manage contractors with it? The change in demand for the program, we believe the opportunities here are with the no change and the less demand. And this is a service that residents really want and need, and at what level do they want it and need it? Or is it something we could do something different with? The fixed costs at the bottom, I'm going to point that out, is the council costs. We didn't feel we were going to categorize that in any way, so.
Get rid of those, personally.
So, cost recovery of the program, we feel our opportunities here are almost in every category. If you take a look at the zero rating, is there any cost in this category that we should look at changing, charging for? There might be some that we don't want to, but maybe there are some that we aren't recovering and should. And in the ones that we are recovering, do we have the right studies in place that say that we're charging the right rates? Should we be charging more? So we'll be looking at that, too. Portion of the community served by the program, we believe our opportunity here is kind of in the one and the zero category for sure. If these aren't serving much of the, the community, should we continue with them? All right. Moving to the next slide, we'll put a few dollars to those pie charts you saw earlier, taking a look at the dollars that are in the community results versus the dollars in the governance results, when you look at all funds, and then when you look at just the general fund. So with that, we'll transition into just looking at the general, general fund. Again, the community of results for the general fund. You notice at the top, the big bar, the blue bar is the CMO, and then you've got the police is the green, and the purple at the end is, is public works. Those are our big contributors here in the general fund. Moving to the governance results, the city attorney again is in the peach, the next section over is the CMO, and I can't even tell you what color that is.
Burglar.
Yeah, exactly, purple, right. The navy, or not navy, the olive green is the finance and HR, then you have IT, and then you have public works. And again, you can see that these are pretty evenly distributed in the results as we, as we have our costs covering them. This is probably a refresher, but I did want to put it up here to say, these are all the funds that we manage. We've got the ones on the far left, that are the general funds, the governmental type, fixed fund types, then you have your enterprise funds, your internal service funds, and then the funds that are pretty much the trusts and so forth. So our 2017 budget includes all of the governmental fund types.
That's a good, quick question.
Sure.
Is 21 lower than what it was before?
No, that's, that's the same number we have.
It is the same as it was last year.
Yeah, it's, it's been quite a few.
Okay.
Rita.
I also would like to know, is the Inglewood Housing Authority Board on here anywhere?
Inglewood.
No, it's not part of the city, so it's federal.
Funds are managed by their board.
We've got the renewal authority fund, but no, that one's not on here.
Federal agency.
No, it's a city agency, but they get, they get funds from the federal government, I understand that, but we do have some authority over them.
Her question's legitimate, because you have a lot of things in here where you're talking about leveraging 10 million into 30 million, and where you would get the services elsewhere, and that's certainly assets, and a function of what the city has provided, both financially and in assets, and our board and our overseeing it, so she brings up a really good question. It's a huge asset that we have in, in here, and not all of this is real money and real stuff that you're talking about, you're talking about how we're leveraging things and how we're, you know, I'll just keep with your word, leveraging, so maybe, it should be included, it's a huge asset that we provide in this community, so I don't know why when we're doing something, and you're talking about how we've?
Probably because it's not one we need to budget for.
Yeah, we don't handle the direct governance of that, would be my response, anybody, Mr. Comer or Eric, you want to weigh in on, on a response on why it's not appearing?
Well, just to remind, I mean, part of the services and stuff that we're doing for our elderly citizens and housing, and that we've put a huge amount into, so I, actually, I think it is, because we've spent a lot of money on it in the past, we spend money on it in certain ways, so, I mean, we have to take care of that, certainly, so, I, I think Rita's question was legitimate.
Fair enough, and we don't, if we have an answer, I'd like to hear it, if we don't, I'll just make it a council request and we can move on. Do you guys have a preference there?
A council request.
Thank you. Linda, did you have a comment there?
Yeah, I absolutely would love to see it be seen as an asset to the community, so I wouldn't mind at all for it to be reflecting in, but, but we don't control their budget at all in any way whatsoever, so it makes sense that you didn't have it in here, but I think it would be wonderful to be able to identify perhaps a secondary budget where there are things that are assets in our community that we don't consider as ways that serve us, but we don't control the budget, so.
Rita?
Didn't you include it other stuff that wasn't?
Sorry, we're going to Rita here, hold on just a second.
Okay, part of the reason that I asked that question is we have other things on here that we do not control their money or their budgets either, including EEF and EMRF and the Urban Renewal Authority, so that's the reason that I asked the question.
Fair enough, and we'll get a response from staff on that later this week.
We'll make sure we include it where we can.
Thank you, can you please?
So taking a look at the all-city funds for the 2017 sources, this is where we get our money from. We've got the general fund, we've got the, the special revenue, debt service, capital projects funds, enterprise funds, and the internal service funds. This chart is showing you from the 2015 actual to the 2016 budget and what we're proposing for 2017. Our sources of funds is going up slightly, and most of that is due to the 1% increase that we are forecasting for sales and use tax. The uses of funds are staying fairly flat at this point, and then you can see our beginning fund balance and how it affects, impacts that. If I go to the next page, it looks a little farther in the future, and you look at 18, 19, 20, and 21, now this is based on a trend. We've got our CPI that's going up by about 3% a year, and that's just an average for trend purposes, and our revenue, again, we're still forecasting it only increasing 1% a year, very conservative. As you can see at the bottom, we go into a little bit of red here, which is indicating that we're going below our fund balance policy. The picture on the next page shows a lot, probably puts it into perspective for us. So the, the bars, or the semi-solid bars are where our policy, fund policy is saying we should be. The little gray line that's kind of dropping into no man's land is where we're creating, let's say, structural gaps, because if we're only bringing in 1% more revenue, but our expenses are going up by 3%, you will continue to see a gap that compounds every year, and as you can see, if we continue on the path we've got in 2021, we no longer have a fund balance at all. Yes, ma'am?
So isn't that part of the reason we have priority-based budgeting, is if we don't have money, we have to cut back? I mean, so will we be seeing changes in those years where we have those huge deficits?
Yes, this, what you're seeing right now is this is a straight-line forecast, or a straight-line trend of what would transpire. We need to spend significant time with you, council, in '17 to actually prepare and make difficult decisions as to what services are going to continue and what services will not, predicated again on the priority results, the eight results, and all the, the programs that roll up under those results and how they align with them. And so we're going to either have to come up with, you know, new revenue streams for these programs, or some of those programs may cease to exist as we know it. So you're exactly right, what you're seeing right now is this is a straight-line, straight-line trend as to where we are today without changes. We don't want to presuppose those policy issues and questions that you as council members will need to make, to ensure that we have a revenue and strategy funding as well, model as well as a expenditure model that makes sense and sustainable.
Can I ask another question? In looking at one of these charts back here, and I went online to the site that it gave, and it seems to me like this budget incorporates a lot of the comprehensive plan, which we have not passed yet. And so all of the structure really is based on that information, too, is that correct?
No, that, what you're seeing in this particular budget is, again, as things are today, and so when we start to forecast, again, it just takes the snapshot of today and projects that as if there aren't any changes into the future. We have not included or incorporated but for a few capital projects that have been on the long-term, or your midterm capital projects list is presented earlier this year, but there haven't been any additions for any land use changes or anything, it's just assuming the current 2000, roadmap 2003 land use, current sales tax, current property tax, and, and again, forecasting that five years into the future.
Okay, thank you.
And I think anytime you have assumptions that expenses are going to triple the growth rate of your income, of course, the chart is going to produce a, you know, a negative result. Lorette, and of course, our job as council, I think, is to balance that and figure out, hey, how do we manage that? Is it cutting expenses or trying to grow revenues, is it a combination of the two? Lorette?
I think that the current comp plan, as he brought up, but I don't think the current comp plan is necessarily a, a land use document. I mean, the things that have been done here, and according to Kathy, all of the priority-based budgeting results, that all of these eight issues are all, actually all equal with each other, and that we haven't done the priority piece of this. So if everything is a priority, then, I mean, I, I don't think that the community would agree that these are all of equal value, and I think her original question was, if these are the priorities that we're going off of, are these in priority basis, the way they're listed on here? And she said, no, that they're all the priorities, but all the priorities being equal then negates that we have priorities, so.
I'll suggest that those are, or those are more of the outcomes, and that the prioritization sort of happens underneath that, based upon how those outcomes line up with the goals and, and impact.
And then it is?
The priority piece isn't trying to balance good governance versus safety, it's trying to balance what's underneath those, or prioritize what's underneath those.
Well, we haven't seen any of the priorities yet, I believe that some of those have been done, probably with them, but not with council, but then that's where it looks like it's the comp plan, because that's the piece of the comp plan that we've been working on, not, we haven't worked on any of the real land use issues, we've been working on these, so, I mean, her point that these are already kind of in line with the comp plan that we haven't passed, I think is well-taken.
Are those outcomes specifically from the language of the current proposed comp plan, or of the roadmap O3?
I can answer that, mayor. These particular priority results, these eight results emanated from three, three particular places. Number one, from the 2014 National Citizen Survey, these were all priorities that emanated or bubbled up to the top, that the citizens made very clear in that scientifically significant survey as to what their concerns were. Secondly, when we did a lot of the public engagement for the comprehensive plan, those, some of these same themes came up, and so that's the second area. Third area where these priority results came from, were, were you as council? Some of you were not the council at the time, however, there were discussions as to what some of the priorities were, and council helped to weigh in on that. Taken all together and put into a funnel, and they distilled out, these eight results did come about as the final results of the priorities for the, for the community, and underneath these eight results, there are over 700 programs that the city currently provides that roll up under each of these areas, some under good governance, some under, you know, safe and healthy community, so those programs then are scored utilizing the five questions that Ms. Rinkel read earlier, the basic program attributes, are we mandated? Has there been a change in level of service? What's the cost recovery? What's the portion of the community served? That's how you determine the priority of those particular programs that fall into quartiles. Quartiles one and two are very aligned with those results, quartile three and four less, and so that is where we're going to have the opportunity to look at the reallocation of those resources perhaps in those quartile three and four programs, or even bolstering or strengthening quartile one and two programs such as safe and healthy community. We know that we need to, in the next period of time, provide the police with more resources out on the street with officers, and so how more resources out on the street with officers. And so how are we going to do that? We'll eliminate quartile three and four programs, not only within the PD, but elsewhere to reallocate those resources to help bolster that, those results. And so it is true, Council of Berentine, that all of those are of equal of weight. If we were to start to then now decide which is most important, is Safe and Healthy more important, that becomes part of our discussion, I believe, in 2017, as we further look at creating that sustainable future so that in 2019 you do not see this rapid decline and we are not in conformity with our reserve policy and our revenues and expenditures are more closely tied together.
So I just want to clarify that. Then these priorities for this budget have already been set. I guess, being new on council, I had been waiting for this year for us to set the priorities. I didn't realize they had already been set by the 2014 Scientifically Significant Survey and that the previous council had set them, that they are the ones that are incorporated in this current comp plan that we're working on. And then we will be going on as this council to go ahead and define those priorities. But these are the priorities as you've already defined them using the information you gave. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda, or I'm sorry, Rita?
So that makes sense to me a little bit. So in 2014, is that when the comp plan first started coming into being?
Yeah, actually, I believe the process started in '13, but in '14 was a significant portion of the public engagement. I don't think public engagement started until 2014 for the new comp plan.
Okay. So that's the reason all of this stuff kind of fits together. Then my next question is, if the budget drops off dramatically and we start looking at things, we may have to make changes that will be difficult because the citizens may not like some of the changes that we have to make?
Correct. That's exactly right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and I'll just note, I think the higher-scoring quartiles are actually the ones we want to keep, and the lower-scoring quartiles are the ones we need to eliminate.
Correct.
Just so that we're all kind of using the same language here around the table. And then I think to Lorette's point, I suppose if this council had some issues with these, we could be, you know, reevaluating the language used to sort of couch those eight categories if council wanted to discuss that at further depth.
Or at least get a copy of it, of the 2014 Scientifically Significant Survey. I would like to have it. I mean...
It's on our website.
There's some of the information so that we have, as new council people, a little bit more, whether it's on the website or not, but how it's all coming together to be used this way. Because, like I said, I thought we were going to be doing priorities as this council, and as it comes out now, kind of late in the game, a month away from us voting on a budget, it's kind of was already set. So I just want to know what we're using and how this was going. That's all.
Again, in my mind, the priorities have not been set. You know, there is some suggestion from staff here, but again, what we're talking about are some of these outcomes. These aren't the things that we're trying to prioritize. We're trying to prioritize, I think, the programs and outcomes that come up underneath those, again, as well, I'll reiterate. Linda?
I think I'm a bit confused. I think the categories are what have been developing over time. Is that correct, the eight? And so if there's something significantly left out of one of those eights, we certainly should be having that conversation, but they look incredibly comprehensive to me. It's what we do under each one of those and how we then make choices this next budget. Where will we cut them based on these four quadrants? That will be helpful to us. We haven't done it like that before. That's what's new. I also think that we did have a conversation, all of us that are currently on, about what categories. I think we've been molding it along as well. Maybe I'm just...
We've probably had some discussions. I'm not so sure.
It seems like early, early on.
We all adopted this language or something officially.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's the language. I'm not, I don't want to be wordsmithing tonight nor, but I do think that this provides a really helpful kind of sifting between these four, you know, four through zero down under each one. But the fact that you said that all eight are considered the same, I think, tells us straight up that we have the opportunity to emphasize some things within them if we think that that's more accurate. Within them, actually. But the National Citizen Survey is something that, you know, for those of you that are brand new, we should send you the link to that because I think that's really helpful.
If you mind distributing the link, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
And what I would like to point out is from '16 to '17, our services are fairly level. We have not made any major changes. So it's from '17 and beyond that we're going to need to take a look at what we can do to help level the budget. The next slide just kind of goes through our quick assumptions. We've got the proposed budget is conservative. We've got it in compliance with our reserve policy. We are getting $800,000 earlier than we thought from the EMERF road development being returned, and we do not have any additional funds to transfer to capital this year. This gives you a fairly detailed idea of what's going into our revenue, what's creating our revenue for the general fund, sales and use tax being the largest piece. Property tax is one of the larger pieces right underneath sales tax, and that did not move much at all from 2016, and that's because they evaluate every other year. So here's the assumptions that we have, our sales and use tax. In '16, we had it at 3%, and we've brought that down with our adjusted as to where we really think it's going to come in this year, and proposing 1% for next year because we really aren't seeing the growth we were expecting. Property tax is flat. Right underneath that, you'll see the forecasts that the state has and the Metro Denver retail trades.
Can I ask a question about property taxes?
Sure. Go ahead, Rick.
Ugoa does have a fairly robust resale. They don't last long, but there's, the property taxes, they're all being based immediately on the new value. Why would we still be flat when we are selling homes at much higher values and the property tax is based on the sale? Would we not see more of an increase?
I was expecting to see an increase myself, but when we got the numbers from the county, they said no. So I did not ask them what detail was in them.
Yeah, because they increased the value of everything what, a year, year and a half ago?
Keep in mind, though, council, that because of Tabor, you know, there's a cap upon which property taxes can be assessed, and that number gets ratcheted down every year. So we actually get the number directly from the treasurer at the county as to what they're going to be levying on our behalf. And so that's the number that we have to put into the budget. We do anticipate that there will be a revaluation of real estate again, not in '17, but the following year that would be reflected. But yeah, we're not seeing as much growth as you would anticipate. And last year was 2.9 million, now it's 3.2. It's just a slow growth.
I sure am paying a lot more this year.
To the city or to the county? Because I look to my own, and I just, everyone up ever slightly.
And 2.9 to 3.2, still substantial percentage jumps.
Yeah.
And then you'll also notice that the retail sales forecast for the state is closer to 4%. We're not seeing that here. We're not seeing that here.
I'm gonna do my share.
I know. Appreciate it. You can send in more if you'd like.
Nice try. So this next slide gives you the detail of by department, how much of the expenditures are being spent. The 15% includes the fire. Even though that says CMO office, that budget is all in one bucket, and that's most of it, at 5.7 million versus a total of 6.8. These are the assumptions for the expenditures. We have the 3% average wage salary increase to keep us on par with other talent and the increases they're seeing outside of the city. Medical insurance is increasing 5%, and we're able to keep our dental insurance flat. And there's some very various statistics that go from 2.4 to 3 to 2.7. And so we just picked an average of three to give us a little room. The CPIU, it means CPI urban, and that's the non-salary increase. The CPIW is the wages. These are the other financing sources, transfers in and out, and we've got the detail there. The 117 proposed in the budget for '17 is from the public improvement offset, capital lease payments, the qualified energy conservation, and the Selby ground lease. And there are no transfers out. At this point, I'd like to ask if you've got any additional questions and also show you our RAD tool, and we'll have Jenny do the driving on that one. This is an online inventory tool, and it helps us identify some of those priority-based budgeting areas that we should look at and take a look at alternatives for.
I think she might need a microphone.
I think so.
Got to get close to it.
Hello?
Thank you.
Just to get onto the website here.
If you guys need a minute, we are getting close to break time. If you wanted to, we could move the break up here if you need an IT minute.
It's definitely your call, Mr. Mayor.
Think you need a minute. Let's go ahead and take five, and we'll take a five-minute res- oh, wait.
We're there.
Did you have it?
We're almost there.
We'll give it another 30 seconds. If he's able to work his magic here, we'll try to stick with this for, and then do the break after this presentation.
Just for a question and answer, can we just minimize? Well, you already got my bladder and excited about it.
Excited about it? All right. Let's take five here, everyone. We'll reconvene in five minutes.
Oh, look at you. Thank you, Murphy.
Yeah, I was lifting 120-pound pieces of pipe over my head all day long.
There it is.
Oh, that's why. Yeah, you had it minimized, I think.
I didn't. I minimized it.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay.
Sorry, we're still on budget, John.
I think we'll keep it very... Well, I was wanting to get up. I didn't know if they were referring to the housing rehab loan program. And that is a fund we have. So, but they kept talking about the housing authority, so I think we need to address that. Because we cannot, I mean, these are all components of the city government, the EMERF, the EEF. Those are truly quasi-city governments. The housing authority is a separate governmental entity. How, but we don't contribute to them. I mean, we do, I guess, I mean, if you want to look at it, we provide them some services that we charge back for, but they're not really, they're not... No. We have no control over it. I wouldn't... I need more understanding as to what else they're thinking of.
No big deal. Cancel on the mayor, you know? No big deal, you know? No, it's cool. Honestly, I was like, I was so freaking busy during the day, like, canceling is like, woo, you know, like, I got an extra hour to do something.
I just... And I think that's a bigger conversation you have with the authority, the housing authority, because they are a separate entity.
Because I feel like you and I are asking each other the same question.
If we want to partner with them, that's definitely a good option, you know, partner more. But we are currently partnering with them in terms of providing them services. Thank you so much.
I get a little emotional, too, because I feel like I'm trying to...
Like, sitting right here in a car, you know what I mean, like, New Year kind of thing. Maybe that's a vibe, you know, maybe that kind of like...
How's your toe feeling? Lie. Oh, good. Yeah, because you have to let it. And that's what's so hard when it's your toes or your fingers, because the circulation, yeah.
Okay, guys, if I could get everyone to take their seats, we're going to get started back here in just a second.
side, you have to load the data. That's something I've learned. I go, well, where's the data? I, it's like, well, you haven't loaded it. So, just Kathy kind of showed you this graph a little earlier, where it shows our governance is 13% versus community results at 87%. And then you can also scroll down and actually see the cross-section by department, how our money is spent by departments for community programs versus governance. And that's just your overall budget. Again, you can break this down and look at, if you go over to your community results, you can see a stacked bar graph, and you can see all the results and how our programs influence those results. The color blue shows that there's a strong contribution or a strong influence of those programs to the results, and the orange is little to no contribution. And these are areas, just at a high-level view, that shows that we have opportunities to look at some of these programs and see maybe, do we eliminate or do we just reallocate our resources in a different way than we've currently been using them? Okay. Now, the RAD 2.0, this is pretty powerful. And this has several filtering capabilities. Up at the top, you're able to filter your program, so you can see your overall budget of 80, almost 84 million for all funds. You can select your program type. You could just look at your community programs or your governance programs. You could even look at all funds or a specific fund if you're wanting to drill down. And same with your departments or divisions. Again, you can look at all departments. You could just look at one department or subdivision of that department. As well as looking at overall, your overall budget, your expenditure budget, you can look at what portion of the programs are funded by government resources, portions funded by program revenues, direct costs, administrative costs, personnel costs. Pretty powerful. And then up at the top, too, you've seen this 154,000 predominantly city council costs, because you're going to have fixed costs if you have a government entity, whether or not you have a department, you have some just ongoing fixed costs. And the overall FTE count for this, for the 2016 budget, is 433.5 FTE that's being allocated. Okay, so those are just your upper filters at the top. Down below, you can also filter on your basic program attributes. And the way the scoring was, anything that scored three or four meant that the program strongly influenced the result. Anything less than that means there's some influence to no influence. So, again, you can look at your, you know, your programs and your budget just in terms of a particular mandate. You can also look, just if you want to look at your quartiles three and four, which we've been looking at. And then you can also look at your range of results. You can look at all results, or you can look at each individual results in particular. But as you click on any one of these, you're going to see that your data will change. And I said I wanted to look at three and four, so I should have unclicked one and So, across all funds, we have approximately $19.8 million that we might want to look at a little closer and see if we can, if there are any opportunities to either change programs or reallocate resources. And then if we're just looking at general fund, we have about 14 million. Again, these are in our quartiles. Remember, one and two are those programs that strongly influence our results, and our quartiles three and four are programs that do not influence as much as we would And then up at the top here, right now, we're looking at the RAD model, so you're just seeing graphically this information. You can also look as a comparison to those entities that are also using priority-based budgeting. You can see the mean and then where we fall, you know, towards the mean. So, comparatively speaking, we can see how we're shaping up with others. You can also look graphically at the department spending for these particular programs. And then for this particular one, we could also get a download for the quartiles three and four for the general fund. We can look at the program tables and actually download this data, and now we can look at each of those programs that we've identified, that we wanted to look at for the general fund that have a result of, or in quartiles three and four, I should say. And then the other item I wanted to show you, and these are the five policy questions Chris and John have developed over the years with their various organizations, and these are higher-level questions for the leadership of the organization to look at and help kind of guide the discussion of what program should we be looking at, what makes sense. And again, up at the top, you can download the policy questions, and it will give you the detail of the programs that are influenced by those five policy questions. But I want to get to the policy questions before we go to questions and answers.
Can this software handle a number of users at once?
Yes. And we also can have multiple users logging in with the same sign-on credentials. So, that's why for city council, we'll have you each have the same login, same password, just to keep it simple. But here, this is giving you a summary of costs by department for those various policy questions that we'll be going over just here momentarily. Also, behind the scenes, on the second tab over, are the programs. So, it'll give you not only the department, the division, the program name, the total cost, and then which policy question, and the number of FTE that's associated with those programs.
Are those FTE sometimes overlapping for some things?
Yes.
Yes. And.
That would be important for citizens.
Yes.
If you start adding them up, you think, oh, my goodness.
Yep. So, the first.
Is it .25? That means that that person's putting in 10 hours a week.
Approximately, yep. Yep, yep. .25 FTE, that's right. So, this, the mandate policy questions are predefined filters that Steve and Chris have pre-programmed so that you can just quickly look at these. And we can see, just by a push of the button, we've got 33 programs that we can look at, and it's basically, are we over-providing to a high-mandate programs with low relevance? Meaning, we're selecting all of those programs that are mandated by either the state or federal government, and are we providing too much resources because they're in quartiles three and four? They're not really a one in, quartiles one and two, meaning a high influence on our results. And so, dollar-wise, we're, so of those 33 programs, total dollar spend is almost $1.9 million that we could be looking at a little differently. And I spoke to John and Chris. They said that this comparison here is not working properly, so not to look at that at the moment. And then the next policy question is number two, are we over-providing to our self-imposed mandates? So, now, we're looking at city ordinances and, so not, so just city ordinances, because number three would have been city charter ordinance we have a little bit more control over that we can change relatively easily. And again, there are 35 programs that fall under this category, and again, they're quartiles three and four, and about $1.1 million overall that we could be looking at and seeing if we could spend that a little bit differently. Third policy question, are there sharing options with other political organizations? And this one was pretty telling, that we have quite a few opportunities that we might have with other organizations around. And again, with Vegas, we can change the view, but now, if we, because right now, we were looking at all funds, and if we just narrow that search to just the general fund, we still have quite a bit of an opportunity of sharing.
As you're going through all those various examples, you know, we had a bunch of them in three and four, is, are they overlapping the different examples, or is this just?
They could be, and that's what we have to, well, no, no, no. Here, they will not be, because we're looking at the whole budget. When I show you another download, when we're looking at the summary, you're going to see that where we're leveraging our dollars, there will be some programs that do cross multiple results. And that's where you have to be careful, because you might say, oh, here, but we benefited over in this area.
I have a question also.
Yeah.
The mean there, is that comparing every user or every municipality in the system, or just ones that are like same size as us?
No, just in the system. But on the policy questions, it's not working properly, so you can't really compare ourselves with the policy questions. But when I was, when we were just looking at the RAD tool at the very, right over here, when you're looking at a comparison mode, here we are being compared with other users of the system.
Of any size city?
Any size city.
Any size budget?
Yep. And when we first logged in, we have to pick our community, and you're going to see who else is also using the priority-based budgeting.
Can you compare it to, can you pick out of that if you wanted to, to compare it to, or is it always?
It's not an option yet.
No. No, not yet.
That would be helpful, too.
Yeah, that would be. Okay, and then four is reliance, are there public-private partnerships opportunities? And again, all funds, there's quite a bit, or, you know, at least when we were going through the exercise, we're thinking there are a few options for us. And we're still learning this process. We just went through this exercise for the very first time with our 2016 budget, and just going through the various exercises, we're realizing there might be some programs we can collapse and some programs we might need to expand and possibly add to it.
And Jenny, if I could have you go to the bottom of that page?
Sure.
I'd like to show them, hopefully, it's, you can generate a table at the very bottom where it'll list all the individual programs in that selection.
So, you really can get to the detail of the data in this, in this program. I haven't explored it all yet, but getting a little dangerous.
This is an exciting tool.
It is a very exciting tool. I mean, you can see the opportunities here, and we, it just was rolled out to us mid-July, so we're getting, everybody's getting up to speed very quickly and seeing the opportunities available to us, so. And then the last policy question is, are there programs best provided by the private And again, you know, I think these are all great questions that we all can ponder and dive a little bit deeper in. So, I think I've taken more than my 15 minutes.
Questions for Jenny or Kathy? Kathleen?
When are we going to be able to log in and?
As soon as I get the email to Allison or Eric, we'll get that out to you, either later tonight or even first thing in the morning, because we've got your credentials all ready to go. You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions or comments before we move on to the next agenda item here?
Thank you for that exciting presentation. I agree. I'm excited to use this tool. I guess I do have a question, and that is, when will we actually be identifying the programs? So, we've done this great analysis. We've, you know, a certain amount of programs in three and four that we want to take a look at. When will we actually dive into the programs? Here's the programs that have been identified, and here's what they do, and council should probably consider them. When will that process kind of happen?
The timing on that hasn't been determined yet. Like I say, we were just getting into our programs and making sure we understand them. It's always helpful if we understand them before we try and explain them to you. It makes it easier.
And because we have the structurally imbalanced budget picture coming later, we're going to want to work with you more frequently on this, and so I think what we'll probably do, not dissimilar to what you're doing with the comp plan, is to actually try to introduce more sessions with council on the study to start looking at these programs so that you have an understanding of the programs that may not score as highly as they should with the results, so that we can actually gain from you some policy direction as to whether or not they should continue. Because, again, there may be some very difficult decisions that have to be made to the public about hours of operation or just programs in general that we provide to the citizenry today that may need to be curtailed if, in fact, we're not able to identify other ways and means in which to have a structurally balanced budget in the future. So, you'll hear a few of the programs next week that are going to be highlights for each of the departments, but actually getting in and diving deeper and looking at quartile nature of those programs, I think staff can help prepare and prep for that in 2017 and beyond.
Thank you. We'll work on that. No, I think it's an awesome tool for council as well as potentially for the public here once we kind of get our arms around how to use it and what we know kind of what we're doing. You know, I apologize about the confusion about the quartiles. I'm realizing some of those previous scores were kind of throwing me off on what number, high number or what a low number sort of meant, so I apologize on the confusion, I think, on some of that quartile. You know, as far as the fixed cost, I assume that includes all of our professional development fund and all that stuff. You know, that number seemed relatively high for the seven of us, but maybe that's just me. It doesn't match up with my check that I get in the mail, unfortunately. So, I think that includes all of council's activities, including professional development and everything else. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. We'll move on to agenda item four, which is the comp plan. Community Development Director Brad Power.
And then the last policy question is, are there programs best provided by the private And again, you know, I think these are all great questions that we all can ponder and dive a little bit deeper in. So I think I've taken more than my 15 minutes.
Questions for Jenny or Kathy, Kathleen?
When are we going to be able to log in and...
As soon as I get the email to Allison or Eric, we'll, we'll get that out to you, either later tonight or even first thing in the morning. Because we've got, we've got your credentials all ready to go. You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions or comments before we move on to the next agenda item here?
Thank you for that exciting presentation. I agree, I'm excited to use this tool. I guess I do have a question, and that is, when will we actually be identifying the programs? So we've done this great analysis, we've, you know, a certain amount of programs in three and four that we want to take a look at. When will we actually dive into the programs? Here's the programs that have been identified, and here's what they do, and council should probably consider them. When will that process kind of happen?
The timing, the timing on that hasn't been determined yet. Like I say, we were just getting into our programs and making sure we understand them. It's always helpful if we understand them before we try and explain them to you, makes it easier.
And because we have the structurally imbalanced budget picture coming later, we're going to want to work with you more frequently on this. And so I think what we'll probably do, not dissimilar to what you're doing with the comp plan, is to actually try to introduce more sessions with council on the study to start looking at these programs, so that you have an understanding of the programs that may not score as highly as they should with the results, so that we can actually gain from you some policy direction as to whether or not they should continue. Because again, there may be some very difficult decisions that have to be made to the public about hours of operation or just programs in general that we provide to the citizenry today that, that may need to be curtailed if in fact we're not able to identify other ways and means in which to have a structurally balanced budget in the future. So you'll hear a few of the programs next week that are going to be highlights for each of the departments, but actually getting in and diving deeper and looking at quartile nature of those programs, I think staff can help prepare and prep for that in 2017 and beyond.
Thank you. We'll work on that. No, I, I think it's an awesome tool for council as well as potentially for the public here once we kind of get our arms around how to use it and what, you know, kind of what we're doing. You know, I apologize about the confusion about the quartiles, I'm realizing some of those previous scores were kind of throwing me off on what number, high number or what a low number sort of meant, so I apologize on the confusion, I think on some of that quartile. You know, as far as the fixed cost, I assume that includes all of our professional development fund and all that stuff. You know, that number seemed relatively high for the seven of us, but maybe that's just me. It doesn't match up with my check that I get in the mail, unfortunately. So I think that includes all of council's activities, including professional development and everything else. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. We'll move on to agenda item four, which is the comp plan. Community Development Director Brad Power is present to discuss the comprehensive plan. We've seen a memorandum that highlight, highlight where we left off. You know, with some additional discussion with the city manager, I would like to keep this discussion relatively brief and not use the full budgeted time, and perhaps get through one or two of these items. I guess I'd like to begin with any cleanups of the green items that staff has proposed to us. If council, any council members have any major objections with some of that, I'd love to hear those first, and we can kind of discuss those. If I don't see any, what I'd like to do is jump into where we left off, which is goal learn three. Anything, Mr. Power, you want to add to that?
I think you covered it there.
Thank you, sir. Okay, then let's move on to goal learn three. That is improve community safety, cleanliness, visual beauty, and civic pride. I won't read all of the objectives under there, but there are seven of them, and I'd open it up to discussion on those. I apologize, I do not have council comments in front of me, I don't believe on these, so I'm relying on whoever, you know, the council member who might have an issue with it to step forward and, and begin the discussion here.
Well, just in all fairness, it's got, I don't know how it could put back on the agenda because we had, and you guys weren't originally on the agenda for tonight, because it was ordinance 34. And then after our packet got sent out, so I don't have the hard copy of this, after our packet was sent out, the agenda was changed, what's in time on Friday, to go ahead and put this in. So thank you for being able to rearrange that. I don't know what process, you guys used to go ahead and change the, the agenda, but I appreciate that you guys are willing to do this on shorter notice, because we didn't have it.
I think it just simply requires a change in the notice posting, which we accomplished on Friday, you know, as a result of the lawsuit. I, I think that, you know, an exact session would be more appropriate on that, and so that's how we ended up with the agenda, how we had tonight.
Did you record that?
I'm sorry?
Did you record that agenda-setting meeting when you changed it?
Uh, no, there was no agenda-setting meeting for that.
Well, when, I, I guess just since the first one, when we, the ones that we are originally doing are recorded in our public, so that the public knows how that process works, that you might want to consider that, so that there's some continuity to that decision-making.
Appreciate that. I would suggest that the, you know, place that the public needs to go for the agenda is the notice posting itself, and not the audio of the meeting. I think the audio of the meeting is used to supplement that notice posting and provides an additional level of transparency that this government can provide, that, you know, candidly, no administration in the past has provided, so I think it's a, it's a wonderful thing, and I think it's just a supplement of information to the public. I'd like to move on, did you have something else?
Well, no, just, that's a misstatement, because the agenda-setting meeting is a public meeting, and once that information is provided and the public has that, it would be nice if we had something so that there was a little bit more continuity to it. I don't think that's unreasonable.
I don't think so either. I guess I'm just pointing out that I don't think that's required, and, but I will keep that in mind. Again, I think the interest here is to provide as much transparency to the public as possible on these matters. Again, we're on goal learn three. If we'd like to get to the matter at hand this evening, that is the comp plan, I would entertain questions or comments on that, please, at this time. Rita? Can we share a mic with Rita, please? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I did, I do have a question, again, on the changes and the documented changes. Is there any way to keep the changes by perhaps underlining what's new, and to keep those changes in the document? Instead of just telling us what the changes are and then putting them in?
Council's made this request in the past. Staff, Eric, anybody want to address this? I, you know, I know that it probably requires somebody to sort of retype this, probably is a little bit labor-intensive. Anybody want to comment on that?
Well, the software that was used to put the document together, we don't have in terms of, it's not a Word document, so it's very difficult to go in and make changes and still show. You can put little comments in, but it's difficult to show what the change in the text is. So what, what we've provided is a, a ongoing list of what the original language was from the draft that's being reviewed now, and the proposed rewording that has been suggested by council.
Okay, so the rewording, is it not being...
It will not be inserted into this document until we've completed the review, and then, then all those edits and changes will be made for the final document in, ahead of the public hearing for...
Okay, so the highlighted green portions, do they contain the updated wording?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And everywhere you see an asterisk next to either a goal or objective, indicates that that wording has been changed. There's one case where there's a pound sign, or a hashtag, and that is, that's a new objective that was added to one of the goals at council's request.
Okay, thank you.
Is council comfortable with that level of tracking? You know, do we want to try to direct something different? Lorette, did you want to come in?
When we first brought this up, I mean, we were told that you couldn't, because it caused a huge amount of problems. You had the historical preservation people who'd been talked to, things had been taken in and out. You had planning and zoning where things had been taken in and out. We didn't know if it was planning and zoning, or whether it was staff. And going back through those documents, it had been both. And we were assured that going forward, we would have that kind of red line document available, which is common practice for these types of documents. You didn't use it before, but I thought we were, you assured us that from here forward, we were going to be used in that process.
What I believe we were indicating is that we could put together the goals and objectives in the format that you see here. There's no way that we can take this document, the comprehensive plan draft, and add or edit the document in any convenient way, simply because of the format that it's in. If, if the document were in a Word format, it would be very easy to make adjustments, take out text, highlight, underline, strike through, but with the Adobe software that was used to do this, we don't have that capabilities. So what I've done is transcribe basically every goal and objective.
But I guess what I'm asking is, at that time when you agreed to do that kind of documentation on it, so we would have that information, why didn't you move it, change it then? To something where you could provide what you guys were saying you were going to be able to provide?
We would have to have our consultants completely redo the document, and that was not part of our budget.
Thank you. Linda?
I, I remember the conversation just a little bit different, and I think you've come up with what we asked you for, which was what it was and what the revised is, and that that's the way we have to do it. Am I hearing from some of you that you want to know who exactly changed it to be that way? Because we did, we're the ones who revised it, right? I mean, these revisions are our revisions, no one else is at this point. We're not able to go back and say, "Planning and zoning changed this one, because that's done and over with," or "Historical societies, or historical stuff got left out because so-and-so pulled it out." It's, we can't do that anymore, but we can show where we've made changes.
Correct, yeah. As I mentioned, I think in a, in a prior request, if you wanted to make a comparison between the prior versions of the comprehensive plan draft, you could do that, but there's no way for us to superimpose one version over another to show what the changes are.
I find this helpful. Thank you for putting this second document together now.
Right. So if, how did you make the corrections? Did you type a new document, or how did it get changed?
Yes, this is a completely new document, where I just redid all the goals and objectives into this format.
Okay, but is it still Adobe?
No, this is, actually, this is an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. Can changes be made on Excel spreadsheets?
Yes. So you have all the goals and objectives from the comprehensive plan in this document.
Doesn't have the same track changes sort of features, I think, as Word does, but I think what he's saying is it, you know, it'll at least have a copy of what council's changed from the beginning to what council's operating version are.
Correct. And there's a complimentary document, a Word document that has, that was included in a packet that, that shows both the original language and then the suggested language, so you can, so you can see how a particular goal or objective was changed based on your recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Lorette?
Well, I would suggest in Excel that you can go ahead and, at least in the body of it, make sure that right, where the change is being made under the comment section, I mean, you could go ahead and make sure that that's available within that document, without having to go to a separate document, which was what we were trying to avoid.
I mean, again, I'm relatively comfortable with the process here, you know, especially given where we're at with things. I guess I just wanted to feel out if the majority of council was okay, or if they wanted to try to direct staff for some additional. I'm, I'm seeing a lot of nodding, and so I'm just going to move on again, and move on to, again, goal learn three, and so again, I'll accept additional comments on the...
That's great.
Goal or the objectives underneath it. Amy?
I just have a question on the objective learn three-three. It says reduce light pollution from new developments. Do we have any benchmarking or information on current light pollution, or it's just saying...
Gone up substantially in the last few weeks, unfortunately, with the Excel LEDs, but, so, you know, I'm not sure we're meeting this one quite yet, but Eric, do you have an answer for that?
Yeah, we, we haven't adopted any dark sky compliant type of regulations that some communities might, might have. Mostly those are rural, but as of right now, we don't have any lighting prescriptions that I'm aware of that are in our codes.
I think this is becoming a bigger issue, though. I think you appreciate it for bringing it up, because, especially with these LEDs, I think all of us have probably received a few phone calls regarding light pollution recently, and so can it really impact our community nationwide? I think this is becoming a major issue. I think when you look at light pollution from a, a larger sort of macro level, it, it really is becoming a problem. Steve?
It's not appropriate.
Rita?
On goal, or object, objective learn three-two, continue and expand programs designed to ensure the proper disposal of garbage, used or discarded materials. Isn't that a code enforcement issue? I mean, does it really have a place in the comp plan?
Or under learn specifically, I think is probably even a better question.
Well, there's an educational component to this. In fact, the, the Keep Anglewood Beautiful Commission organizes household hazardous waste and electronic recycling, and that, the wording here may be a little too tight. It probably should reflect a broader environmental education component to it, and the use of garbage and used or discarded materials. It's basically trying to get at recycling and responsible disposal of waste products.
And maybe we could take another shot at that, that includes some sort of educational element, as well as environmental element. Other, others agree with that, or want to comment on that? Steve?
Well, on that particular one, oh, sorry. With that particular one, I would assume that it's also about what people pour down the alleys and pour into the wastewater, and running their garden hoses with chlorinated water down the, down the gutters. And that sort of stuff, I would think, is potentially just something that goes out with your water bill, just, you know, little fact sheet, or, you know. But there you go. But I did want to say something about the lighting. I think the big thing that we're finding with the lighting is that it's, it's in the blue spectrum, so people are used to that warm tone, and when we get into the blue spectrum, that light becomes real contrasty to the eye, and that's what people are really getting upset about, or at least that's what I can tell out of that. So I guess, this is kind of on track, but kind of not. Maybe we should ask Excel if they've got warmer ones, or if they can put a filter in there, or when they install...
Hey, we've been in contact with Excel. I don't know if you want to comment on that, I'll come to you, Mr. Power. Go ahead, did you have something?
Well, Mayor, in a, in an effort to try to continue what we tried to do last time, is edit on the fly. I could offer you some revised language for 3.2.
I appreciate it. Look at that.
Continue to, continue and expand education programs designed to ensure proper disposal and recycling of discarded materials. I think that broadens the language that Harold was talking about.
I guess I just feel like it's still missing the purpose, though. Is it for environmental or beautification, or both? You know what I mean? Probably both.
I think it would be both, because I know KEB has talked about some other type of events, and I think we talked about it here, like a citywide community cleanup day, and that would be kind of environmental and beautification, so I would like, if we change the language, to include both of those elements.
Now, just going back to the language of the goal itself, it's improve community safety, cleanliness, visual beauty, and civic pride. So maybe that kind of covers that, I don't know.
I think it covers that.
Yeah.
I mean, that is what the goal is, and here's how we're going to do it.
I guess I'm just trying, the environmental piece, I mean, cleanliness and attractiveness, I feel like are different than, you know, environmentally friendly.
Community safety, right? Environmental. And that's addressed kind of in 3.1.
Yeah, all right. I think I'm probably okay.
Are you suggesting you'd like to see environmental included in the goal three, learn three? Because I sure would, I think it, it would help.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking, is, is there another spot for the environmental piece? Is that what we're trying to accomplish with this goal? Or is this simply a aesthetic portion of our goals?
Well, I, I would like to have it in there, because, I mean, yeah, I have, I have seen people pour things down gutters, and when I have said things to them, they're like, they had no clue that that wasn't, that you shouldn't do that. And it, it's like, "Oh, my goodness, do you know what's going into your water?" And I think it's a lack of educate, it's a lack of, of informed decision-making. I don't think they're purposely, they weren't purposefully doing it. They weren't trying to say, "Oh, I'm going to," you know, secretly, they were just not informed. And people doing the same in their homes and drains, and I appreciate the pipeline from the water department, because often they've run through, but if you don't read that, you just don't know that. I mean, people even pushed leaves down that way, let them go into, I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, don't be doing this." So...
I agree. I guess we're, I think there's, you know, probably want an environmental piece here, unless we think that that lives somewhere else. Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Very appropriate.
I agree. Part of that is to educate, to, you know, protect the environment and all of our natural resources, as well as the aesthetics of our neighborhoods.
We're not talking about climate change or anything, we're talking about keeping a water system somewhat livable.
Ma'am?
I think most, I think, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, geez, have a good gentleman, Rita, go ahead.
All right. All I was going to say is, on even the first two, three-one and three-two, I do think if it's about learn, education needs to be in there somewhere. Because when you're making these other statements, like continue and expand programs designed to ensure proper disposal of hazardous materials and the mitigation of environmental health hazards in the home, that really has nothing to do with the learn piece of it. Same thing on three-two.
Maybe the goal itself needs to incorporate that educational piece. Maybe that's what's missing here.
In the objective?
Yeah, the goal. Goal learn three should have an educational term, you know what I mean, as well, right? Because I mean, the whole purpose is learn here, and so perhaps there should be educational language.
I'm just really glad we can use the word education tonight.
Not a bad word.
Why, are we allergic to education?
We were. The last time we did this, we substituted information.
Depends on what it is.
I like education, and we'll stick, stick with that. Other comments on any of the objectives or the goal?
One last comment. I, I do know, at least when I was on KEB, that the whole process of the hazardous, household hazardous waste stuff was an educational piece in and of itself as a program, so, but I have to emphasize it as that, that might be a good thing. I don't know what KEB feels about that, but, but I know there are a lot of people that came through with things that they just didn't know what to do, and they're trying to give, and they can actually dispose of them very easily, in a, in a very certain way. Had we not had that program, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to educate. So the programs are important to keep, and then make them an educational opportunity for people is great. So I don't know how you'd do that.
Do all of these kind of goals and objectives just live under learn, or is there something that's kind of like very similar to this, under another goal heading, that I'm kind of missing here? No, this is kind of where it lives?
Yes.
And so, yeah, I agree, it's not, it's not just execution of these items, it's also education of these items, and so it's probably a dual purpose of education and execution. Rita?
I do think that a lot of these things are code enforcement issues, and probably shouldn't even be. shouldn't even be in the comp plan. I mean, education comes by enforcing already known laws. And when they get penalized for not doing the right thing, that is an educational program.
You know, I think we'd like to be a little more proactive.
Well, I was just going to say that.
I'll let you address that, man.
I would prefer to be way more proactive and not put everything on our code officers. And there's a way more involved in keeping a pleasing and environmental clean than code people. It's certainly about, there's a whole lot beyond code enforcement. So I would hope we wouldn't remove it from here. I'm sorry, I just-
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about some of this. But, I mean, like, the graffiti thing. We've had, we can't leave graffiti, right? If you get it on your fence or something, you have to paint your fence. So I think some of that is already things that we're doing. That's, that's all I'm saying. I think some of this is unnecessary.
Steve, now? And then Lorette?
Under "Learning," it's, you know, people learning about how our wastewater works, how our stormwater systems work is kind of important, because I would say most people have no idea that you pour something down that wastewater drain, it goes to the plat, you know.
Stormwater, yeah.
Yeah, people just don't, excuse me, stormwater. I don't think people understand that, nor have they ever thought about it. I mean, it's like, we just let, it just goes. So it definitely falls under the "Learning" aspect. And the more people understand how the different pieces of the city come together, the better our community will run, and frankly, be more informed.
And I hate to even throw this out there, but, you know, I was reading some reports that suggested that one of our most vulnerable natural resources is contamination of our water supply through the storm drainage system. Mr. Power?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to continue to step to the plate until you tell me not to.
We love that. We love that. Although, I apologize, I do have one member who has not been able to weigh in. I apologize. If you don't mind, I just want to see if she's got a comment on this specifically. Lorette, did you have something?
How specific does it have to be for me to be able to comment?
Well, I was going to say I'd hold it if it wasn't having to do with, which one are you on, Mr. Power?
I have some alternative language for Goal Learn Three, the goal itself.
Okay. So if it's not to do with Goal Learn Three, let me let him read that.
Oh, well, okay, the rest of everybody got to go. No, go ahead.
No, I'm not trying to shut you down. I'm just asking if it has to do with Goal Learn Three.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, why don't you make your comment? If you have a comment to make, please make it now.
He didn't give me an opportunity. He said I could comment on one of them. That's not what everybody else has been commenting on. So my comment is not specifically on that. And I kind of wish I hadn't been the only one who was-
Well, then I'll come back to you. If it doesn't have nothing to do with Goal Live Three, I will come back to you, ma'am. Mr. Power?
Thank you. So if you wanted to consider some alternative language that includes an education effort, you could possibly incorporate the following. Expand environmental stewardship and education efforts to improve community safety, cleanliness, visual beauty, and civic pride.
Love it.
I like it.
Sounds like we have consensus there. Lorette, do you have a comment now?
Does it have to still be on 3-3?
No, anything to do with three or 3-1 through seven.
Okay. The, I kind of don't think that that really fits under 3-3 for what you were doing. And to Rita's point on the graffiti, I don't know how people have to learn not to graffiti their property. I mean, so I think that that's somewhat difficult when you're talking about somebody else's actions on the part of other people. I mean, you're not talking about, what do you tell people? Don't spray your own fence? I mean, I'm not, oh, I'm sorry, you've got an answer?
I do.
Go ahead.
You know, I was going to suggest that Mr. Power's comments were for Goal Learn Three, not Objective Learn 3-3. It was just Goal Learn Three. And then as far as educational for graffiti, I think it's a lot about, like, reporting. And, you know, these type of things are, you know, like signatures out there. So the PD would like to come out, take pictures, do these types of things. And really, it's about education, I think, towards quick removal. I think that's the most preventative, you know, effort that really folks can do is, is quick removal. Because, again, the motivation, I think, for these people is to have their sort of signature, if you will, be visible to the public for longer periods of time. And so if they run into, encounter a location where it's being quickly remedied as our code calls for, within 48 or 72 hours, I mean, it's pretty quick. And I agree that, you know, in some ways, it's a little bit a slippery slope, because the victim then becomes kind of the person who's not in compliance. But it really does make for a good policy for quick removal. And I think there is a legit educational element there. Other comments or questions? Linda?
Yeah, I would just point out the art board, no, yeah, that that, that was part of the community art, not KEB, right?
Yeah, the cultural arts.
The cultural arts, sorry. The Cultural Arts Commission, I think, has really helped with this with the graffiti piece. And I do think that graffiti is a form of art, in that we forget that piece, but it can be used in a really negative way. So incorporating programs that help us understand what that is and appropriate places for it, maybe you would say the word graffiti isn't even a positive word, but some do see it as a positive word. So I think it's fine to leave that there, that there's this overall educational piece that, that the cultural arts has been definitely a great part of.
I was going to say that exact thing. That would be an example of a program, if it was, you know, got legs, and we really put some effort towards it, that could help with that particular objective.
So the one you gave language to was 3-3?
No, the Goal Learn.
The goal itself.
Overall.
No, that's what he redid. Okay.
Would you mind reading it?
While the mayor might not have thought I understood that, I kind of did. And I was just getting clarification on it, since you kind of co-opted my question, took over and started answering for me. Go ahead. Could you repeat it again?
Of course. So, just to be clear, Goal Learn Three, "Expand environmental stewardship and education efforts to improve community safety, cleanliness, visual beauty, and civic pride."
Other comments regarding the goal or any of the objectives?
Okay. I just, my comment remains, I just don't think it fits well there to have that environmental piece in there, so.
Anybody else not like that language? Rita?
I do have a question on Objective Learn 3-6, "Partner with property owners to facilitate the restoration of brownfield properties within and adjacent to the community." Brownfield properties are generally industrial areas, is that?
General irons, the great example I think of.
They're unbuilt property. It's open.
Not necessarily. Some of them can be abandoned or semi-abandoned, have buildings that are just obsolete as well.
Or it could also have-
Environmental issues.
Environmental issues.
That's a fundamental element of the definition of a brownfield.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Do all of them have to have that to be a brownfield?
I don't think there's a hard and fast definition to brownfield, but I think an environmental component is present on the majority of what people consider a brownfield site.
Most obsolete buildings generally have environmental issues that go along with them in demo.
So is that suggesting that the city partner with property owners to facilitate the restoration of brownfield properties within and adjacent to the community?
It could include a city partnership, but it also could include the city playing a facilitative role with some of the state programs related to, and federal programs related to restoration of environmentally challenged areas. So it could be a multi-party partnership.
Other comments on 3, 3-1 through 3-7? I would like to end this portion a little bit early, if we do have time, to move on to our city manager's choice. Lorette?
I'd agree with Rita, that I haven't looked that up, considering we're using, it gets used quite a bit with the Urban Renewal Authority. And there are some pretty specific definitions of it that I, I'm not sure that that fits in the, in this section at all. I mean, I don't think that, who's supposed to learn about that? That's a kind of weird thing to do. And I don't think it belongs in there.
Other comments?
I guess the question would be, where would it belong? Because we certainly do want to be doing this kind of thing, right? So where, where could we put it?
If you were going to do anything with, especially if you're saying "partner with," then you're talking about potentially doing something with Urban Renewal Authority, that would have to have a classification of blight, and then the inclusion of trying to use taxpayer monies in order to restore brownfield, which is generally something that has a contamination issue with it. So that would, that's a whole separate process, and that should be under that piece of it, not necessarily the "Learn" part, wouldn't, I don't think it belongs there.
Others agree with that, or further comments?
I, I'm sorry, Linda, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Rita?
I was just going to say, I do agree with that. And, I mean, we had decided that we would remove things that dealt with blight and things like that, so.
I don't have a major issue with it. I mean, I don't see the term "blight" or the Urban Renewal Authority mentioned. I, you know, again, I think there's a lot of different ways to partner with property owners. I, you know, in my mind, I don't even read that necessarily to read a financial piece necessarily is required. Other comments or questions?
Could you just give me some examples of what you just said? I just tried to clarify what you just said. You said-
Partner, again, through education.
I just simply, not to upset you, I just was asking if you could give me some-
I'm just answering the question. Nobody's upset.
I was just-
I asked the question, and I'm answering it, so.
I'm just asking if, I'm not sure you do, and just let me ask it. If you could just give me some examples of the other partnering you believe, other than what an urban renewal type authority would do. Thank you.
Again, an educational PSA type of thing would be a partnership, in my mind, that, again, the term "partnership," I think, can be used in a wide variety of circumstances. I don't feel required to list those right at this moment. Rick?
A park could be an example. Community to work with the brownfield area, because that's what happens a lot of the way, you turn into parks.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Could also be as simple as working with the building department or community development of what other options that property owner may have. There's, there's a lot of different aspects to this. It isn't just always about taxation and that sort of stuff.
Again, this is under the goal of "Learn," which, again, in my mind, implies an educational element, which is the main focus of this goal. Linda?
I guess the reason why I asked about brownfields was, what, what definition are we using in this? And if we are talking about, if it's limited to environmental, then perhaps it's a little different, it needs to be somewhere else or explained a little bit more. But I could see, we've had this happen, and I think, Rick, you've had properties in your district like this even, where a couple homes are absolutely vacant, no one can find anybody, they're, they're a trap for people. We're trying to work with the community in understanding how to actually deal with that property, and to teach about how, you know, what the responsibility is, and whose responsibility is what. I don't, I don't know, it's a complicated issue, and it has come up over and over again. Is that what this is getting at, do you think? Besides just the industrial areas, like maybe the ironworks where we had?
I read brownfields as more of an inclusive term, and not so much by the category. It's, it's a problem. It's a property that's either been abandoned, or, as you said, it's got title issues, or it's just not, it's abandoned, or just underutilized.
Would there be another term that doesn't do a light, because I think we're getting sort of a lightning response to brownfield as being something we would condemn. And I don't think that's, I didn't read it that way either. Is there another term that's not misinterpreted? I mean, like, in four years from now, will somebody read this as some blighted property? Well, actually, most of these we're talking about were. But without any need for us to go in and reclaim.
Right. I think when you're talking about blighting properties, most of the time, that's in the urban renewal context. Brownfield designations aren't necessarily in that same context. So, for instance, we have a real world example right now, where we're playing a facilitative role on a brownfield loan application to the state of Colorado up in the ironworks area for one of the developers up there. So we're playing that role of the intermediary between the state and that applicant. And so that's, that's another area where brownfields is not as specifically defined as that, kind of that blighting standard and leading to that urban renewal designation. That wouldn't be the case in every instance, or in most instances.
I also think the term "brownfield" is probably used to describe the antithesis of a green field, which is basically, you know, a brand new development there, nothing has never really been before.
Or open space, or, you know.
I have to share Linda's concern, because you have, the EPA has a specific definition for brownfield. Just in trying to look up, define brownfield, is, it's either used with urban renewal planning, or it's used in EPA definitions. And I do think that later on down the road, Linda, that it's going to be interpreted that way.
Well, that's what I'm worried about. So if there's another term, I'm fine with using that.
Change it.
Abandoned properties.
Redevelopment?
You know, I don't know what it would be. But I didn't read brownfield in the same narrow sense, but I get a sense that there are a number of people that will read it that way. So what can we do to make sure that it's understood in a broader context?
Does redevelopment property encompass that type of a property in your guys' minds enough, or no? Lorette, maybe, ask?
No, because when I read it, I mean, I'm not, let me go back to what it might have been, if they're talking about just homes in the community that are not kept up or abandoned or something like that, that's one thing. Individual properties, and I don't think brownfield is the proper term for it. But I'm not sure, so that's what I was thinking, was like, we're going to partner with properties. And I think it said "adjacent to," let me go back to what-
Yeah, adjacent to the community, properties within.
And so especially where it says "adjacent to the community," isn't exactly making me think that it's individual homes in a residential area. That seems to be a bigger piece of property that would be next to, adjacent to the community, which would lead me to a more of an industrial feel for the entire thing. So I don't think it, that's why I didn't think it belongs there. If you want to totally change it into something else about individual homes in a residential area where you have things that need to be taken care of, that's, I think it would be way different than what that says.
Wow, that's really interesting. I appreciate that comment. I, I read "adjacent to the community" mean in othering municipalities. Yeah, I guess I'm thinking, yeah. And so, you know, it's interesting to hear her interpretation of that, because I feel like that's, could be misinterpreted.
And I've been called by Denver folks, actually, city council members that are adjacent to us, about certain properties, same kind of thing, where they think it's not up to par.
But I think to Lorette's point, you know, in these industrial areas, there's not a lot of homes. And so some folks might, you know, coin the term "community" and think of that meaning residential areas versus industrial corridors. So I feel like I understand a little more how she ended up with the concern.
How about just property improvement?
You know, I, I feel like it's almost like "problem property," but we need a much better, we need a much better term than "problem properties," right? I mean, perhaps, if you wouldn't mind-
You're our ULI guy. I mean, brownfields, from your background, has been more broadly used, right?
If you don't mind, maybe bring back some next language at our next meeting. We don't need to necessarily have all of, too many chefs ruining the stew right at this moment. If you'll bring that back to us, we'll consider that. And honestly, council, I would like to move off of Goals, or, I'm sorry, the comp plan at this point, to try to leave some time for substantial city manager and attorney's choice. So I will move on now to Agenda Item Five, which is council member's choice. Rick, if you don't mind, we'll go around. Robin?
Nothing.
Rita?
I have nothing right now.
Steve?
Nothing.
Thank you. Lorette?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Amy?
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Olson and I were discussing some ideas also with Dorothy today, and we, Dorothy Hargrove. And we talked about the cities of service, and how we can kind of expand that and incorporate more city departments, other boards and commissions, to kind of get everyone kind of on that, on that system, to increase volunteership in our community. And we talked about that today.
So do you want me to join?
Yeah.
Are you done?
Pass the torch. Yep.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
So one of the ideas that we had was to convene, so the major users of volunteers right now is the police department, parks and rec, and the library, and then, I think, the Cultural Arts Commission and KEB. So there doesn't seem to be just one place, but where volunteers are encouraged or needed. But it would be helpful, and particularly when I was thinking about cahoots last week, to try and consolidate and form someplace where we're, whether it's just a, the portal with the metro volunteer site, whether we stay with that, or something else, where we can continue to push out what the needs are within the city, and what the opportunities are, really, for the city, for our citizens to be involved. So I guess the question would be, is it okay for Amy and I to continue working with these groups to figure out what might be some possible ways to formalize a little bit more, so that when our city manager comes up with a great idea, it's part of this, and when the police have, I mean, Tony has just like 68 people already coming to this thing that you've got, from her academy folks, I think largely.
that you've got from her academy folks, I think largely, but there are lots of other opportunities like that. So, to find a way to elevate that and to promote it, it's like one of the positive aspects of our community that gets overlooked by our citizens having, I mean, our citizens are really engaged in some very positive things, and sometimes we don't hear that. So, I guess we'd like to just throw it out there, are you all okay with us continuing moving in on that? And it's one of the comp plan things that we talked about earlier as well, so.
You know, I have no problem with it, I appreciate your folks' efforts there. Rick, anybody else? Anybody with an objection?
No objection, question. So, are you thinking like a boards and commission that may be doing something special, or they need more people working with that?
Well, you know, I've always had this idea, I would, but we can't, we, I think we need to talk to all the different groups that are doing stuff. I mean, Tony's the expert on this, right? But we don't want to make it her job, it's somebody else to decide that. We got to work with the city manager on what makes sense for staffing, because we don't want to, we're not asking for a new position either. I mean, there are some committees that could do it really well, like keep Inglewood beautiful and engaged, you know, and create a little bit more, but we've got to talk to them, they're a whole new committee again, and maybe that's not the right place, maybe it's, right now, Dorothy's been doing it out of libraries and her resource, people have been doing research and keeping things, and the Malley Center is another one that has a lot of volunteer opportunities, so I just think it's a ripe opportunity for us to, to focus our citizens, to help them see things going on and let them know they can volunteer here, as well as to celebrate what goes on all the time, so.
So, again, thank you ladies for taking the lead there, you know, I appreciate your guys' efforts and your willingness to get and figure out in front of that, if you feel like you need support from council or additional staffing.
Yeah, if you have ideas, send them our way.
Let us know and we can talk about, you know, what we need to do, because I agree, that's a real positive that we should be focusing on in the community. You know, just to dovetail on that a little bit, Eric, you have any update on Cushing Park this weekend? You know, there are some new ways to get some volunteers out there, I was trying to coordinate a Pokemon Go group to do some volunteer cleanups of the parks.
Right.
And I think these are fantastic, you know, it was just so turnkey, they already were organized, they were already ready to do it, they had a date, they had a park, I'm like, great, let's let them make this happen. Can you give any update on that?
Yeah, sure, our park staff actually worked with some individuals that met with Mayor Jefferson who are engaging in Pokemon Go, which is great that they're out in the parks, but they enunciated that Cushing Park was in need of some service and they wanted to help, and so we were able to marry our staff up with some resources for them to do that. I don't know the number of bags that they actually collected, but, you know, those are the kinds of projects that, that, you know, we liked, and it was totally spontaneous and spur of the moment, which was totally cool.
But, you know, really awesome, I hope we do a press release on this, this is a wonderful, again, positive thing, technology, real cool thing. And so, I guess I'd love to turn contact over to one of you ladies with this Pokemon Go group, if you guys would like to coordinate with them a little bit. Oh geez, we might have a new player.
Excellent.
When I was over at AT&amp;T, the gentleman there said he'd been playing for the last 60 days and walked like ridiculous amount of miles, and here at the city center, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we have a substantial amount of activity around Cushing Park and around the city center itself, pretty much at all hours of the day, you'll notice, probably as you're exiting here this evening, a lot of folks near the fountain area walking around, trying to catch these Pokemons around our city center, and they're, they're becoming part of our community and willing to, you know, do some community service while they're out there, and so, real win-win-win for everyone involved. So, again, thank you for taking that on. Yeah, I'll pass along that contact, as a matter of fact, I gave it to you, if you wouldn't mind passing it along to them to let them know about their next project, I'm sure they would, they would, they would love to receive a new assignment. They are a little bit kind of focused on the Broadway kind of corridor, I don't know if they followed up with a bar crawl or not, they were talking about a bar crawl of some of our local businesses afterwards, again, economic development and service wrapped up to these folks who are walking around our streets already, so I love it. And I did not have anything for mayor's choice this evening, so I'll turn it over to city manager's choice.
Thank you, Mayor, if it's all right with you, I'd like to move down to the end of the table, it'd be easier to kind of operate, so thank you. Thank you again, Mayor and council, this is a difficult topic for me to cover with you. However, I believe it's important that it is covered inasmuch that it, as you can see from the title, observations that I've made over the last several weeks and specifically seen a steady decline in, in the nature and the way meetings have gone, and specifically several behaviors. And what I'd like to do tonight, as you'll see from my agenda here, is just discuss our current environment, point out specific behavioral observations, describe the impact or reaction that mainly the community and staff has had in these behavioral observations, define a future state that's desirable, and then put out a challenge and ask for commitment and challenge to the city council. Again, as I mentioned, there's some risk in me coming forward tonight, making this, it's not, it's not going to be a personal attack on anybody here, and it's not meant to do anything but just indicate the level of frustration, the level of incapacitation that I believe not only myself, but many on staff have, are saying themselves. So, just like to walk through this with you. So, the current environment, as I would describe our organization, and this has nothing to do with what's going on internally, but it's, again, a reaction to our meetings that we have, is that we're literally a powder keg. You know, we, we foresee this as a powder keg, I think people are walking on eggshells and are very, very concerned about what's going on, how people are being treated, not just staff people amongst yourselves, members of the community. I think we have a culture of fear right now. As you heard last week from cahoots, staff goes by mentality of duck and cover, because they're afraid they're going to have their head ripped off and somebody urinate down their neck, and I hate to use that language, but that's, that's where we are. Morale internally is at an all-time low, and again, it's nothing that, I don't believe that staff is doing at a management level to, to create that, I think people see what's going on at council meetings and believe that to be the case that permeates and spreads to staff level. There's a frustration with the lack of a defined strategy and a direction from the council. Seems like there's a lack of accountability for inappropriate behavior and conduct, again, we're, I'm able to hold staff accountable, I hope, you know, you see that, I want to be held accountable for my, my conduct as well, but again, from a council level, I don't, doesn't seem like there's that, that level or standard. And then again, finally, the lack of standards for decorum at our council meetings. Whoops, went too far. Way too far. So, current environment, as again, pointed out last week by cahoots, and again, this wasn't necessarily staff, this was, again, comments that were gleaned from you as council, we have a dysfunctional group dynamic. I think there's been some disregards of key provisions of the city charter, which we'll talk about in a while. I think we have dysfunctional communication as well, and how that should work. So, here's an observation, administrative meddling. In many instances, I believe that members of the city council aren't working through me, they're actually exerting their will throughout the community and violating, in a sense, this particular provision of our charter, and I don't, I don't think need to read that, but I think there are examples of where individual council members are violating the city's charter and specifically getting involved or interfering in matters that normally would be left to me, and in some cases, I hear about it after the fact, and that's frustrating, you know, as your employee, you know, I need to know about when, when these types of things happen. And I should state this, council, I, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you, if you would afford me the opportunity to walk through this, and if you have any questions at the end, certainly I'll stand ready to answer them. So, the impact of administrative meddling is this, it undermines the position as defined in the charter, doesn't conform with the charter, and it causes confusion to staff and the public, whom they're supposed to go to and talk with, with respect to issues and matters that they may have. Another observation is disrespectful staff. Staff has just been disrespected in public meetings. Now, again, in many instances, understanding that people who come to meetings may be emotional and they're going to make those remarks off the cuff, however, when those come from our own council members, that's very debilitating and distressing. Derogatory remarks have been made about staff in public meetings, failure to defend staff when preposterous or false statements are made by individuals in the public. And again, we're hired, we're here as public servants, and, and, you know, to a certain extent, you're going to have that, where people are coming in and making statements like that, but it's very, very difficult for us. The impact of disrespectful staff, you can follow this little tree here, leadership starts at the top. Disrespect encourages disrespect. I think it encourages the public to act in a similar manner, it leads public to believe that staff is not effective and incompetent, demoralizes the staff, it exactly leads to that duck and cover mentality with the staff that was pointed out by the cahoots report, it also leads to general feeling of malaise for, for everybody at a meeting. I don't state this very lightly, but I, I hate Mondays. I love my job, many of our staff, many of our department managers and leaders love their jobs, but they hate meetings, they hate Monday night meetings. I come and I feel sick, not knowing what's going to happen, what comments can be made by the public, but what comments can be made by council to, to promulgate that type of behavior. Personal attacks, there've been personal attacks of staff in public meetings, and they're frequent, and it's not necessarily from the public, sometimes it's from council people. The impact of public, of personal attacks in public, it encourages the public to act in a similar manner, it leads public to believe that staff is not effective and incompetent, again, demoralizing, duck and cover mentality, it enhances the difficulty of attracting and retaining high-performing employees. Council, I came here in 2014 with the express intent to do nothing more than to make this community a better place as I found it and as you wanted and you desired. Some of you were on that council that selected, some of you weren't, but my pledge is to do nothing more than to, to bring in high-performing people, the best that we can find in the marketplace today, to do that very thing, and I'm having a difficult time right now keeping some employees, because of the behavior that they've seen with council, because of the nature of the questioning, the nature of the comments that have been made. I'm doing my damnedest best to make sure that I do keep the team that we have, including keeping myself motivated. Finally, this is important, discourages outside investment in community. Last week, we had a, an individual who was making a substantial investment in the community sitting in the audience the whole time, and, and I talked to him during, during the intermission that we had while you were in executive session, and I got the sense and feel that he was second guessing himself for making the investment, and that's sad, because we have a great community, we all know it's a great community, we want people to invest and be, want to be part of it. Another observation is that sometimes people are being led by fear, some members lead by fear, there are threats of punishment, and there's been bullying behavior. The impact of that, again, demoralizing staff, some of the same things we've talked about before, discourages collaboration between staff and council, and in some instances, I've heard from some of my department directors, they don't want to come and present to you on Monday nights, and they're, because they're, they're just, they're just afraid, afraid, and it's, it's an incredible place to be. And I think it also discourages creativity and new ideas being brought forward, that could potentially be very, very helpful to this community and the organization as a whole. Lack of decorum, members of council, public and staff are interrupted and spoken over, there's discrediting of staff and other members of the city council that occurs. Individual members speak on issues and make individual statements that give the appearance of advocating for a particular point of view whenever issues are brought forward, when not even all the facts have been brought forward, and that allows you to even make an opportunity to, to make a statement on, on an item. What does that do? Well, more, there's more yet, lack of order and reasonability at times in public meetings, there is irrelevant or unduly repetitious communication and other disruptive behaviors that disturb and impede the orderly conduct of the meetings. Failure to address all remarks, questions, and comments to the presiding officer, there's not, in some instances, respect for the mayor and his, his duty as the presiding officer of the meeting. So, the impact of that, there's an appearance of chaos, there's an acceptance of dysfunctional behavior, discouragement of staff, discouragement of public, embarrassment, discouragement of business growth and investment in the community that I just recently addressed. I think it paralyzes us as an organization, our ability to make progress. There's nothing wrong with agreeing to disagree, there's nothing wrong with not everybody being on the same page, we appreciate the fact that there's diversity of thought, however, right now, we feel paralyzed that we're not able to make any progress. Lack of preparation, in some instances, we've seen that members are not fully prepared for meetings, members aren't reading materials that are sent out ahead of time, then, in some instances, there's been misplaced blame for not having requested materials available when in reality they are, they're in the packet, or they've been sent out already. In some instances, I just went back today and looked at some council requests, we've had some of the same council requests three times since, since beginning of the year. There's misplaced frustration for not fully understanding issues when materials and options are available. What does that do? Well, staff frustration caused by members not reading reports and documents that took hours to prepare, I think it deludes the richness of discussion that could potentially happen if people actually were prepared. Progress or decisions on matters are delayed, staff is forced to prepare and send out materials multiple times, staff is inappropriately blamed at times for confusion when answers exist, and listen, again, as I said, we'll take accountability of where it needs to happen, if we fail to do something, we'll own up to it. So, what's a desirable future state look like? Enough about the negativity. I think, number one, everyone's treated with courtesy equally. I know we stress how we need to treat our residents with courtesy, staff would ask the same thing from its council, and council should demand the same thing from its staff. I think active listening with respect is what a future state looks like, there's an exercise of self-control, there's a focus on the issues and the avoidance of personalizing the debate, there's an embrace of respectful disagreement and dissent. Like I said, we believe in democratic principles, we want people to have a spirited debate on issues, we want to see that there's inclusive opinions on different public processes and tools for forging sound decisions that you might make. Other characteristics, rely on and expect professional opinions and recommendations from staff, you know, in some instances, our staff's been told to shut, sit down and shut up, last week is a good example. Basic standards of decorum need to be adopted and adhered to by all, I recognize in your council policy manual that that exists, but we need to, I think, work a little bit more diligently on that. So, council, here's the challenge, I've got some questions for you, and I hope that you feel comfortable in asking or answering these questions. Do you recognize that the observed behaviors that I've just outlined are having an adverse impact not only on the council, but the rest of the organization? What's the council willing to do to ensure that the behavior's going to change? What's the council willing to do to ensure that all are pulling on the same rope and in the same direction? What do we need to do to move towards this desirable state? Because the status quo can't continue, it's just untenable. I mean, people are at a boiling point, as where we are right now. Commitment, is there a commitment by the council to want to change its behavior? Again, I'm not asking for anybody to be shut down, shut up, removed, any of that, I think we can regulate ourselves and our own behavior, but what, is there a commitment on the council to change that behavior? Staff certainly is committed to following clear and consistent leadership to improve not only its organization, but its community, the community as a whole as well. And I'm just going to end with this, it's a favorite quote of mine from Andy Stanley, leaders who do not listen, and that means to everybody, not just the citizens, your staff as well, will eventually be surrounded by people who have nothing to say. And the conduct right now, the way it's moving, that's where things are going, and that's a very difficult place for me and your department directors and our paid staff to want to be. I don't know what I expect tonight from council, other than I really think that this council needs to make an investment in its own professional development, specifically in how to work better together. A few weeks ago, I provided you with some proposals, I know many of you on council actually were, were in agreement with that as well, wherein we received three, three particular quotes. If I could ask for anything, I think at a minimum, I recognize that sometimes it's difficult to want to spend more time, because you do invest so much time as it is in this particular position, but if we can't move forward, all pulling the same rope and in the same direction, we're, we're house divided right now, and it's only seemingly getting worse.
Thank you, sir, I'd like to make a comment before we turn it over to council here, and, you know, I appreciate Eric for bringing this forward, I know this is kind of a difficult discussion for all of us to have in sort of a public setting, but, you know, we discussed this, and I think we decided that this presentation would really be helpful for the council, because I think we can agree that we really can do more, I think, to support the city manager and the staff. You know, I know that the political process sometimes is, is a little bit difficult, and it's, you know, somewhat like, like making sausage, you know, I've heard some people sort of use that analogy, but, you know, as leaders of the community, I think we really have an opportunity to sort of lead by example here. This, you know, you know, especially here at the, at the local level, I think we have an opportunity to really show that. really show that we're, you know, reasonable and respectful, not only of the public but of our own office, our colleagues on council, and as well as the city managers and staff of the city of Inglewood. You know, I think the commitment that we should really be asking for in addition to what Eric has really outlined, I'm willing personally to commit to, you know, proactively addressing, I think, a difficult issue for the council, and I'd ask my fellow colleagues to do the same. I'd also ask this evening for a commitment to a retreat with one of the three folks that Eric had outlined in the previous memorandum. I would love to give some direction for the city manager's office so that we could at least start looking at dates and potentially get something like that scheduled. I assume everybody's going to want to comment. Maybe we'll go around Robin, or does anybody want to kick us off in particular? Rick, why don't you go ahead?
First off, this is totally embarrassing. You know, we all serve our city for specific reasons. We all have goals that we want to see get done. We'd hope that others would see our goals, but, you know, Lyndon and I and Steve and Joe, we've served on another council, and we had disagreements as well. But the community saw us as one, and that's one of the things, for some reason right now, we seem to have this fissure, this cut, and that's causing, and I don't, you know, there seems to be that if you disagree, that you are adamantly against that person you're disagreeing with, and where I've never felt that way. But I do need to ask our city manager, Eric, was there an incident that precluded or that made you decide that this was an issue that you just couldn't take anymore, that you needed to address this with?
We've been discussing this for some time. Is there, you know, a particular instance?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, and I've tried to establish a good relationship with all members of the city council. Last week, it's been boiling for several weeks. The most difficult thing for me is that I came into a situation, I'm not making point in any blame at anybody else who's here before, but inherited some pretty thorny issues, not the least of which has been the residuals issue at the water treatment plant. And that particular issue has brought forth a significant number of issues in my mind here, including the administrative meddling piece with personnel matters. But last week certainly was a boiling point for me, and it's difficult to talk about in this environment. Typically, counsel, as you know, I believe in praise in public and chide in private. But last week was over the top for me with some of the conduct that happened. I was literally almost hip-checked out of the way while talking to Mr. Clower last week, had somebody's hand in my face telling me that, you know, basically telling me to stop talking to this individual employee who still is an employee of ours. And then, when you were coming back in from your executive session, Ms. Russell made the joke, "Oh, I'm surprised to see you all here. I bet you thought about going home." And I said, "Yeah, I thought about it, was laughing about it." And one member of the council basically said, "Well, you should have thought harder." And I asked a question, what, you know, was, did you say something? And I heard, and I believe a couple of other employees heard, "Oh, do you want a piece of me?" Why do we have council people who want to fight with its staff, paid staff? Why? Why do we have that? I'm at a loss for that. Counsel, I am trying to be part of the solution and work with you, work with our staff, and work with our citizens to make this a better community, and I'm feeling like I'm getting undermined. I feel like I'm getting criticized unrightfully, and this isn't about me necessarily. I'm just telling you that I'm having a difficult time. There are days I wish I were back to manufacturing something, because it's a hell of a lot easier and a hell of a lot nicer environment, being in the factory, making something, than dealing with some of the issues that we're dealing with now. But it's an honor for me to be able to serve here, but it's, that honor is being tarnished by actions of this body when we can't seem to get along and understand that we're all on the same damn team. Excuse me for swearing. I'm back in manufacturing. I apologize for that. But it's hard. It really is hard. And I don't want anybody on the council or the public to think for one second that I'm not committed or my heart's not in this place and doing the best that I can to keep staff motivated when they sit through these meetings and there's been personal attacks. Our staff's told to shut up and sit down. Whether that's all caught on tape or not, it's not the point of this particular meeting right now, because those things have been said. That's what our people hear. People's perception is reality. So I'm sorry, counsel. I struggle with coming forward. I could have buried this, but if I bury it any longer, I'm going to lose staff, and you may end up losing me. And maybe some of you don't care about that. Maybe that's what you want, but that's not what I'm here for. I made a commitment to come and serve this community. I live here in this community. I care about this community too, and want to make it a better place. And I want you guys to be successful. I want to be led by this council. I want the mayor to be successful in running his meetings. We've talked about some strategies, and he's willing to do that, and I appreciate that. We need that. But I can't continue to see people being disrespected, people feeling ill on a Monday night. We've got tough work to do. We're all big boys and girls. We're willing to do it, but we need to have your support in doing it.
Rick, anything else yet, please?
I just want to say to the mayor, this council, and to management and staff that I would love to continue doing my part in the success of our city. And this is one of those items, it doesn't take one person to do, it takes as all as a team. We fail or we succeed together, and I'm committed to making sure that we succeed together. And I apologize you having to go through this, but I appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate the courage it took to say something. You know, it's almost like, I feel like I'm a child getting spiked, or a daddy getting spiked by my child, you know? It's kind of, it's really awkward. So it's really strange, but I thank you for that, because, you know, as my children have grown, we've had good conversations, and sometimes they point things out, and we can still learn as adults how to be better, and that's all I have.
I would like to apologize. I was joking on Monday night, and I did not mean to offend you.
Now, that's not the offensive part, ma'am, but thank you.
Well, I just, I have seen a lot of what's going on for a long time, and it's been very troubling to me. And when we went to CML and we sat down and talked with the gentleman there, I knew that he could help us, but I knew that unless we had buy-in from all seven of us, it wouldn't do any good. And so the bottom line, I sought him out at one of the deals afterwards and asked him for his contact information, checked on that, because I do believe that this council can do some great things. But unless we're all on the same page, and I don't, I have a feeling that there's a lot of pointing fingers, even if nobody's saying anything, at one person. It is not one person.
No, you're right.
It is all seven of us. And so the bottom line is, I am committed to doing it, but unless everyone else is, it's not going to change. And as far as the meeting with someone, I would choose the person that we met with at CML, because I think just from talking with him, he could help us, and he is a lot less expensive than all of the other ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
These issues being brought up this evening have been, things have concerned me for quite some time now. I can definitely see how it has worn on council and how it's affecting the community. You know, there's individuals that have come forward and expressed their concern. My ultimate goal for council would be that we work as professionals, and as a professional, you realize that you need to seek, well, as a group, we need to seek to understand, and we need to create an inviting environment where people feel free to speak in a civil manner and to have real conversations instead of pointing fingers and so on. I'm hoping that we can accomplish this, and Eric, I'm sorry you had to come and do this, but this is a subject that has definitely needed to be brought to the surface and talked about. When it comes to the team building, I am more than happy to do any of the three individuals been brought forward, just as long as we get a buy-in from everyone. I'm willing to make that work, and that's been something that I've wanted ever since the election, is that we do some activities together to build a team. So my support to staff, I think you have some very talented people working for you. I have great respect for their work, and it can be a very difficult job for them to do their job. And I hope, over the years, I have not ever overstepped my bounds when speaking to staff. So if I have, I apologize to anyone. I don't think I have, but if I have, I apologize. And you've got full commitment from me to help bring this to a professional level.
Thank you, sir.
Well, since part of it, I guess, was a situation that had happened with me, part of the lead-up to this, I think, is that we need to have a city manager who's giving a consistent message. I've heard numerous times, you make the claim that you wanted to leave before I was ever on council. Certainly, you've heard from council member Gillett, and certainly from Mr. Yates about how dysfunctional this council was before, certainly, I guess, before you got on it, and then it became functional. But it wasn't looking like that from the outside when I ran, and it wasn't looking like that to the community. And a lot of this feedback from the community is that they like that there's some back and forth, because they don't feel that they're being represented on a lot of very serious issues, that they're not being heard. And when we are faced with situations where we're seeing that, sorry, but the city manager's office is kind of escalating community issues to where they're getting out of hand when there's been a lot of opportunity to make sure that didn't happen, it's very frustrating. It really is very frustrating. On that particular issue with last Monday night, I had several members of the community come out and ask me to stop you from what you were doing, because they thought you were being rude and belligerent to an employee who had come forward.
Please.
Who had come forward. Nobody hip-checked.
I'll come back to you in just a second. Thank you.
Nobody hip-checked you. You had plenty of time to say your, nobody hip-checked you. The manager even, the mayor even came up to shake hands with Ken, but to the community, it looked like you were setting him up, that you were berating him, that you were upsetting him in a situation that was already upsetting, and I just shook his hand and said, "I appreciate it, I'm coming, and it would probably be best if you went home," because it was, he was trying very hard not to start burst down crying. It was a very difficult situation for him. It was already hard. I did not think it was an appropriate thing to be discussing an employee's situation with the public surrounded in that kind of environment was not conducive to, we needed to de-escalate it, and I didn't think that you were, that that was a proper conversation at the time. You can have a conversation with an employee, not in public, with a bunch of publics surrounded by him, was probably not a good idea. I don't know where our human resources gal was, but nonetheless, several of the people that came that night brought concerns to me that they've got council with the city manager's office, both with Murphy and the city manager texting each other and communicating with each other during the meeting. They brought that to me, two different people, two different issues, that, because I can't see what you guys are doing, I'm equal to you, and that's of some concern. And later in talking to the mayor, I asked when the decision to go ahead and discuss this issue happened, and he said you had texted him during the meeting to go ahead and do that, and I was like, wow, that just validates what these citizens are saying, that during meetings, that we're not paying attention, that we've got communication going on that's wholly inappropriate, and it divides council. You brought up to me the example, not only Mr. Yates, while I was running, that if I won, that you would quit. You brought that up to me several times before, that you were dissatisfied before I ever got on council. I understand that there were challenges you were facing, that there were things going on, including being grabbed and manhandled by the previous mayor. So the attitude that somehow we were in Nirvana with the previous council, it might be a bit of an over-exaggeration. I would like the communication, because there's been, we need to make sure that we're watching what we communicate to the community. I think that's causing some problems. And how, as the city manager, you're communicating with each of us, because I think that there has not been an attitude of trying to build camaraderie amongst us, but to divide us a little, and I would hope that the things that you have contributed to some of the current dysfunction, if it's going too far, is something that you'll take into account too. I have heard from the city manager complaints about all of, everybody on council, and I'm sure you've all heard complaints about me, and that might not be conducive to making us build a team as well. So if we could kind of look at some of those things. The community is frustrated when the staff has already had an opportunity to go ahead and diminish that, and if it escalates and it keeps going, then you force us, or at least me, to go ahead and make sure that we're participating. That's who I'm supposed to be representing. I'm not supposed to be, and I hate to bring up what Ken Clower brought up Monday, but I didn't sign an oath to protect the city and the management of the city and the staff at any cost. I represent the community and their interests and their concerns, and if they're going to have to keep coming to council over and over again to get answers, if we're not being communicated with, like the example of ordinance 34, we should have known when they were going to start doing that. We should have been asked if we wanted it implemented, if we were going to be re-looking at that when that court case. But when we get blindsided like that, when the lawsuits happen, and I get something, I get information from a community member before I get it from the city, that puts me in an awkward position if the news is going to call me, so that I can even go ahead and represent well. So I hope that the communication, things that the city manager's office and the staff can do is better. If we get reports, if we make a decision and you go ahead and send out a report to the community on an issue as sensitive as what's going on with the Allen Water Plant residuals with the sludge, and a community member can debunk that report that quickly, and they come and they're upset because it's not working, what you're doing, then there has to be some other things done. We can't just rally the wagons and say, "Whatever you're doing is fine if it's not working." We have to have some real conversations about how to address things, not just act as if the city never makes a mistake. So while I am very frustrated that a lot of things have escalated to the point that they have with the community, I think that there's a bigger role that your department is playing in making this dysfunctional as well, and I hope we can all get together and make sure that we come to some agreement on how we can make it better for everybody.
Eric, real quick, before I turn it over to you, I did just want to clarify the record. You know, I'm not suggesting that Eric texted me during the meeting. I suggested after the meeting. You know, I've never received a text from staff during any sort of public meeting, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, I would.
I'm sorry. Let's go to Eric. You had your opportunity. You had your opportunity.
Well, I didn't know you were going to come.
I'm sorry. You're out of order, ma'am. Please stop talking, and now we'll move on to Eric.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you're exactly right, Councilor Berantine. If there are areas I need to own, I'm happy to own them, and I think I would ask the same from you. Because last, wait a minute, please. I don't interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me. That's part of the disrespectful nature of what I'm trying to address here this evening, and I've been trying to be very diligent and kind, not name individual people at all this evening. But your characterization of the events that happened last week are not exactly how other people have seen them. Matter of fact, our HR manager was standing right with me when Mr. Clower was there. I was talking to Mr. Clower, and he engaged me by yelling at me, and you're right, I was trying to be very calm. I wasn't being rude or disrespectful. I don't know whom in the citizenry had said that, but I had several employees standing around, including Commander Engler, and I wouldn't ever question his integrity, to say- around, including Commander Engler, and I wouldn't ever question his integrity, to say, if I said anything, it was inappropriate. I have compassion for Mr. Clower. I'm sorry that he's undergoing what he's doing, but for you to indicate that I was rude and condescending to him is totally inaccurate. I don't appreciate that. Listen, I've tried to work with you as well. I've tried to communicate. If you believe I'm being divisive with the council and how I communicate with them, then I will do a much better job. I've been ensuring I say the same thing to everybody, but that is typically my tact, unless some council person asks me or calls me and asks me for specific opinion on a matter. But listen, council has said before, if I'm doing something inappropriate, please call me on it. We can talk about it, we can debate that even, and just, you know, dispel the myths of what you believe you heard or from some citizenry, because I'm happy to sit down with them as well. But they haven't approached me. They approach you on a personnel matter, and that, in and of itself, is problematic.
Thank you. Lorette, I'll come back to you in just a minute. I just want to let the other members get their piece.
Well, could I please, since you allowed him to address what I said, there's two issues. One.
No, I apologize, ma'am, no. We're going to move to Amy, and then Linda will come back to you. Amy?
Thank you for bringing this up. I know it was difficult, and we've brought it up amongst us several times, and I don't, I apologize to you because I don't feel like this is something you should have to figure out. I feel like this is something the seven of us need to figure out. So, I'm glad we're kind of talking about it, and it is difficult, and it's hard, and we need to all keep in mind that we are on the same page. We are all here because we love the city. Everyone who works for the city, same thing. The residents live here because they enjoy it here, and we all just need to be reminded that we are on the same team, and we have the same goals, which is to make it better. I am absolutely committed to being part of the solution and not anything else. If, and I'm 100% open to feedback about any of my behavior or the way that I talk to people or, or address things, and I hope that we can commit to each other, that we're all open to feedback and to making change, and owning up to the things that we are doing that may be hindering us from coming up with solutions. That being said, I do think it is really important that we disagree sometimes, and we, we discuss those disagreements, and we discuss them in a way that is respectful and that we absolutely listen to each other. We don't interrupt each other, we don't name-call, we don't bully. It, it, it hinders us from doing what we need to do, and I am definitely 100% committed to some kind of team-building activity. I responded to that email. I would be happy to work with any of those groups. I think any exercise that we can do to help get us moving forward in the right direction so we don't have to have these discussions anymore, and we can get on with the business we need to get on to, would be fantastic.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda?
I'm really sorry. I am, I'm on vacation, and I came down this evening from the mountains because I thought you were going to do this in executive session, so I am going to have to leave, but I did want to say, my husband's been waiting for 20 minutes to take me back up. I really appreciate your being open in doing this tonight, Eric, and the risk-taking and the courage that it takes. That's a courageous form of leadership to confront the elephants in the room that we all have, and I share Rita's same perspective in that all of us have to do self-reflection on this. I think it's been very hard with this new council because from the day one, and a part of it's your, you're in your campaign mode, you know, when you first get on, and everything that you're running against is whatever we did wrong often, and it's hard to sit here and try and work with you all when everything I hear is that we've not done anything right ever. And I think that's hard. That's hard, and maybe I'm the only one out that, you know, wasn't part of the majority in the past, and that's my own thing to have to, to deal with, but, and I'm fine with that. I just think it's, you have to realize that continually doing that is like poking someone in the eye over and over and over again, but I'm working on it, so let me know when I'm not responding well to that and listening. I, the team-building, I am not willing to do a full day with this group. I think that a better way to do it, and maybe it's the one that you're suggesting, I don't know who's who on that list of three, I think we need several short spurts of things because this group, it, we've worked together for nine months with some dysfunction that's going to take some time to undo. There is dysfunction on the board before. We know that. There was not a perfect council. I haven't seen any perfect council here. So, I don't want to ever say that the past one was better. I do think we worked out things a lot differently, and there was much more respect during meetings than there is now. I don't feel like I can disagree with Rick, and it doesn't, we can go out, and it's a whole different feeling right now, and I don't know fully what goes into that, but I do want to make two other suggestions. One is that we consider not allowing council to ask questions of citizens when they come up during the regular meeting, because I think it invites and sometimes lays a groundwork and an atmosphere that somehow we're going to solve it that night, we ourselves, when we know very little, and that puts our staff down in an uncomp, sometimes an uncompromising situation of having to answer on the fly of things that come up. I would prefer that we let all the citizens have as much time as they want, if we want to go from three minutes to four even, I'm fine with that. It's not about silencing the citizens, it's about ourselves being silenced a bit and not trying to become the savior to any issue that's brought to us on a Monday night. It takes way more perspective and influence and, and, or information than what we can muster up on a Monday night to solve some of these horrendous issues that people are bringing forward from their perspective, and mine, too. I mean, the three major ones we've had are hard ones, so I'd prefer, I'm the one who introduced that on council back in the old councils, letting us ask questions. I'd like to say, let's not do that. Instead, let's push it off to a very specific council request on every single one of them so we don't set up citizens to thinking that it's a forum, a public forum every Monday And I'm willing to self-monitor as much as I can. I think we got to work on it together. I just think it's going to take more than a team-building day, and I, I really don't want to spend a full day because I think it'll be counterproductive. I think when we spend more than an hour and a half to two hours with each other, we get worse at how we relate, and so that's why, I think partly why we need short spurts of working on it together. It would be better for us.
So, you would only agree to meet for an hour or two at a time?
Or, any of the two that were not a full day.
Okay, so a half-day, could you do a half-day?
I would prefer that we do an evening a couple of times and see how it goes, and start holding each other accountable for little spurts of things that we get. I think it would, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's my area of expertise. My whole field of research is on groups and teams, and we're not a team. We're a group. We won't probably ever be a team, but we'll always be a group, and I think that takes a different kind of thinking, a different kind of style of working together.
Thank you, ma'am.
We don't all have a clear and elevating goal with a strategy to reach it the same way. I think Loretta just made it really clear tonight. I mean, her, her goal is, is to help the city, but you're going to have a different strategy of reaching that, so.
I'll come back to you now.
Well, I appreciate that, because I don't, I'm not starting out, I didn't start out with any of those issues that got brought up with my being involved. It was after the city and other people had opportunities that people came to me and said, "It's not working," that you said that they're not approaching you, but they did. And so, when, when they go, "This is what God said, this is what didn't get done, this is what's going on, this is a problem," and I'm trying to resolve those issues to try and find out more information, I think that's wholly appropriate. But not one of them, not one of them was I the first person they approached. I was the one that they go, "I'm not going to get any help. I don't believe I'm getting good response from the department," and you're going to have to own that, you, all three of these, you had the opportunity to talk to them first, and then you're wanting to kind of push something else on it, that there was interference when there was not. There was opportunity, certainly after that first community meeting. As a matter of fact, I don't know if you know this, with the, with the community that asked me to listen to a community meeting, I didn't give them any resolutions. I actually listened to what they did, actually talked to Eric and to Murphy about exactly what Mr. Clower was saying, exactly what was going on, so that they had some heads up. And then they still escalated it after that, but they had the opportunity, they had the full knowledge of what was going on, they had months before that. So, and if, if a community group doesn't want to deal with a specific council person, we are all dealing with everything that's going on in the city.
I'm not sure if you were addressing all that to me.
Well, no, I meant just, I meant, no, not just to you personally.
Because there wasn't, nothing I brought up was related to that, I don't think.
Well, yeah, little, I'm, yes, it was, but the, the issue of some of the communications, especially amongst council with the department, and kind of getting things pre-done with certain council people, we have to function as a group so that you're not singling out certain council people, and, and, and I do feel that there's been some real serious division. I stopped having those kind of conversations with you months ago because I was uncomfortable with that, having any kind of conversation where any of the other council members were being dissed, and I don't want to participate that way, that's not my job. So, I, that is the way that it was communicated on Monday, and you have to have some, try to re-look at how a lot of that looked to the community that was there and what was going on, because those are the people that came up to me and said, "We would like some of this stopped. We don't appreciate what's going on," and just look at how the public is perceiving some of the stuff that's going on, because it keeps escalating these situations, and it's not necessary. And I hope you'll do some of that soul-searching as well as, as I have already agreed to do myself, and that was all, that was the only other thing that I had. I know that there have been, there was a communication sent out, the mayor again, when he, when he talked to me, said that emails had been sent out to council, he didn't send them to me. So, if you want to divide this out and just act as if this is just one person doing this, that's not the case. I am not instigating what the public is upset about. They're upset for very legitimate reasons that we need to deal with the issues and find resolutions, rather than acting as if we're, like I said, just supposed to circle the wagons and support staff. We need to address the real questions and get resolutions, and it's not working so far, so need to move forward.
Thank you. Before we move on to Rick and Linda, I do have a question for you, Lorette, and that is, would you be willing to work with a third party for a retreat of council? Would you be willing to participate in that session?
Oh, yeah, I said that before. I liked the one, I talked to that same one at CML, and I thought that that was a good idea. I think it has to include some of the staff, because I don't think it's just from the city manager and staff's department. I think we've got some council people who'd like to strategically occasionally use staff, and we're not trying to divide us out, we're supposed to be trying to come all together, so I don't know, maybe it should happen that way.
Is the gentleman from CML your preference?
Yeah, I found I liked him.
And second question is, what email were you referencing that I said that got sent to me and nobody else?
I don't know, it didn't get sent to me.
Again, I've never got, you know, I don't know of any of that, so I've just got to deny that for the record, that, you know, I don't remember telling you that Eric sent an email that wouldn't show to the county council. I'm very sensitive to issues of information and sort of the rule of seven, if you will.
All right, Rita was, Rita received an email that I didn't get. There are council people that got an email that I was, I did not receive. I understand if Mr. Keck was upset, but the kind of decorum and behavior that I expect from a man who makes his salary, who has his position, is not a knee-jerk reaction to be setting up meetings at 12:30 or 1 o'clock in the morning and trying, and, "Let's have a little bit more thought," and if that thought is used for what he communicates to the community and the comments that he's made to citizens, that sometimes he might need to restrain himself on some of the conversations he's having, or at least maybe give it a little bit more thought, might be, might be in his better interest for all of us.
Trying to restrain myself right now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Before you do.
Okay, do you want to go Linda first, and then Eric?
I want to say that, that, that is the example of what we're talking about right now. It was a very condescending style and tone and a use of a third person, as if he's not sitting here. I think all of us tonight would like to say, can we all own up to it? And Lorette, will you own up to the ways that you've added into the dysfunction here? If you're not, that's helpful to know.
No.
Almost everything you've said tonight is about someone else, and something that went wrong, and you didn't get an email, which, by the way, could be just the email server. There is another possibility on some of these things.
You're correct, and but I'm, that's what I'm saying, as a list of some concerns that I had on the communications and the way that it's gone, and I would like that to change. Part of the reason that I stopped having separate conversations with him was because of the way the, the.
I'm really glad you did. I'm glad, because I don't think any of us should be having these one-off and taking his time like that, which was our major concern at the beginning, was that three, four, five hours you might have been taking of his time during.
I get three hours back every Friday now.
I don't, I'm not sure that the, that, that's not.
So, I, I think we all need to own up to what our own part is, and that's all I'm asking of you tonight.
That's not true. There were not three, four, or five-hour sessions when I, the last.
Okay, I think we have six who are willing to work on it.
The last, so.
Sorry, sorry. Let's let her answer or not ask her a question. Hold on, let's let Lorette finish here, and then we'll go back to Linda.
So, that's exactly what I'm talking about. You go, well, and all of that information, what you just said, came from him. She's taken up my time on a Friday, she's taken up three, four, or five hours, she's doing this. Do you not think he said the same things about you guys at different times that?
But wasn't with me, because I never meet with you.
No, they were, they were on different subjects.
Sorry, let's save Lorette.
Or whether Penn is grabbing him, or whether he was frustrated before, or whether he's going to quit. He told me twice before I ever ran that he was considering leaving. So, I understand that there was some frustration before, I understand that this might be some of his style, but I'm asking, what I, what I was saying is that that's got to stop. I don't, I didn't want to tell him or talk to him about situations when I found out things that were going on in the community that were very serious, because I didn't, I have a lack of trust with them, and I, and I have some concerns. And if that communication stops, then the things that I'm doing, and I know what's going on in the community, he can't function with that information. So, I, I just.
Yeah. I, I, I'm sorry, I need to leave, but I, I am very committed to doing something more around this, but not in a long period of time, because I think already we've shown how we devolve over time.
Linda, if you don't mind me asking you just quickly before you leave, everyone here is willing to commit to a third-party day or a half-day. Would you be willing to do the same before you leave?
I would prefer that it be an evening and that we do a couple of them. I think it'll be way more professionally helpful to us than a longer period of time. I really do. Unless the person won't do it for that amount of time. But if we have to do a half-day, I just, I think we get really bad after about two to three hours together, and I think whoever we're working with, we need to tell them that. This group falls apart after about two or three hours together, and then we're of no return.
And I think that this person will help us determine what the appropriate length is here. I guess all I'm asking for is a commitment to work with this, with this expert, and I understand that you are also an expert in this arena, and I respect your opinion in this.
Yeah, I just think.
And, and so, again, though.
Like counseling.
Again, what I'm asking you to do is commit to the process that the rest of us are willing to commit to. That's all I'm asking.
I'll do, if you, if you pick five hours, I'm not going to be real happy, but I will be there. I do not think that's the best thing.
Thank you.
And if the person is a professional, they will know well enough that that's also not the right thing to do.
And we'll pass along your comments, and we'll see what the recommendations are.
I would love to talk to that, I'd love to talk to that person even.
I think that'd be reasonable. Thank you very much. Eric, you didn't want to comment, I'm going to go to Rick, and then Steve, and then Amy.
Now, the only thing I will say, I did send an email only to Councilor Russell last, last Tuesday morning at 12:30, because I know she has a very close relationship with Councilor Barrentine, and I sent that in the hope that she might be able to help. I didn't get a response, but clearly they've communicated about it together, so that's fine. That, that's a public document, an email, but that's the kind of thing that's frustrating, council, is that also an email that I sent to you, which is, again, is a public document, ended up in Ken Clower's hands. I didn't send it to Ken, I sent it to you as council, and I'm assuming that's where it came from, and that's the type of thing that's really driving the belief that there's violation of the charters going on and meddling in personnel matters that doesn't need to be there.
I don't appreciate that assumption to me.
Thank you, I'll come to you in just a moment, I'll come to you in just a moment. If you wouldn't mind putting your indicator on, I will come to you. We've got Rick, Steve, Amy, and then I'll come back to Lorette.
Yeah, this is, we're, we're seeing example of exactly what the members of our city are seeing. They're seeing members not even owning up to maybe they might have a small piece of this dysfunction. You know, until, until we can acknowledge a problem, it'll never exist to you. And I'm, I'm, and that's why, I, I sort of agree. In fact, I've, I've said to both of you, I'm concerned about this counseling process. If, if people aren't willing to even admit that they might be a small part of the problem, it's always somebody else, then it's, it, you know, it's the old, it's, it's never me, it's always you adage is, is frustrating, and it's, it's, it doesn't help anybody at any time. Secondly, we at no time ever are allowed to meddle in employee issues, HIPAA issues, or police issues. Next time I see any member of this council doing that, I'm going to ask that they be brought up for reprimand, and if they continue, I'm going to ask that this council ask for some sort of punishment, penalty. Other councils hold, hold the, other council members to a higher standard, and if we have members willingly violating our charter, especially those. those who are so concerned that one, and their goal is to uphold the law, then all laws are important, not just the ones that they deem are necessary. So, I hope that we can get better at this. I, until, you know, until we all say that, yeah, you know what, there might be, I might be digging in a little bit. And I know that I have gotten frustrated, and I have probably swung back. I have had the most horrible absolute lies said about me, about what I do, that were, I believe, begun with members of this council. And it's unfair, because you don't get to, you don't get to defend, or when you try to defend, they'll come in and tell the other people, "You don't need to listen to him." So, it's, it's really frustrating. I hope that we can get better. But, Mr. Keck, I, I, I'm going to continue doing what I've done. I will not be going up to your office for meetings other than with mayor manager. I, I hope that this council can be treated as one body. What you get for one, we get for all. And if we have any member of this council actively working against you or staff, then that is a violation of our charter. And if we have council members working against one another, against decorum, then it is also not what we should be doing, we should be addressing that. And I will be monitoring that and moving forward on that, because our community deserves better, our city staff deserve better. You know what? I deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve?
On the subject of emails, I would like to mention that, you know, if you're looking emails through the, the web portal on Outlook, it is easy to misplace or to not even see something, especially the sheer quantity of junk mail that comes through there. And I know there's been times where I thought I didn't get something, but if I spent 20 minutes searching for it, I found it. I have been, I, I can consistently say, when an email goes out to one, it goes out to all. So, I, I would first, before I would start pointing fingers at an individual, I would start looking at the, the Outlook or the, the email program, and how the person, you know, the specific person is operating it, and how they're, they're filing things. There's also a fair share of emails that come through that get thrown into a, for the lack of a better term, a spam folder. So, it's easy to miss something there. And that's, that's not an individual's fault, it's the technology. So, you know, before we start pointing fingers, let's make sure that, that it isn't an accident somewhere. I, I sure hope that with this discussion, we can get past the personal jabs from one council member to another council member, especially during public situations. That has been a big frustration of mine, a huge frustration of mine. You know, somebody will express their opinion, and there's someone there to not just say this is how they feel, but to make a point at jabbing at the other. And I will admit, month or two or so ago, I was extremely frustrated. And I did jab back, because I was getting tired of getting poked in the eye. And during a exec session, I made it very clear how I felt about the situation. And frankly, it was kind of, I'll admit, it was unprofessional on the way I did it. But I was so frustrated that I had no other options, because you try to speak to an individual about it, and they would just turn around and attack. That, as a council, has to stop. We have to stop attacking people who come to talk to us. We have to stop attacking staff when they come to talk to us. We have to stop attacking people we've paid come talk to us. We need to be, we need to be professional. And that, and I'm making a commitment that I will go that direction. In fact, since that executive session when we, when things kind of went south, I've, I've actually sought, sought out professional help to help me get past that pure frustration. I have to say that when it comes to staff and, and Mr. Keck here, he is, he is one of the most professional people I've ever dealt with. He is extremely talented and honest, and his heart is what leads him. And I think the community as a whole has seen him as, as a big asset. I can definitely say that communities outside of Inglewood are all keeping eyes on him. And they're impressed by his, his abilities. When it comes to our, our team-building exercises, I understand what Linda's saying. A repetitiveness is, is a better way at trying to break some of these bad habits, because a one-day jab probably won't work it. It might work for an hour or two, or a day or two, or a week or two, but old habits come back. And habits are something that you have to work at, and you have to be reminded that, hey, we're, we're going in that direction. So, I, I would be in favor of doing multiple sessions. And, and I do see some value of doing shorter sessions versus a longer session, if, if that is an option. So, I just, I just want to express, staff has been phenomenal in Inglewood. And we've made some huge progress in our community over the past couple of years that Mr. Keck's been here. Openness has gone through the roof. I mean, data that people had always wanted, now you can just go to the website and find it. You got a question, you can find it. Transparency is just through the roof here. And it's always getting better and better. And to have, have leaders in our community coming out and saying that we're doing things so horribly, is just undermining the progress we're making, and the ability to truly hit the goal that I think every, and every one of us wants to hit. And that's a well-run community, transparent, following the laws, caring and concerned for the people. But if, if council can't work as a team, or at least be civil to each other, then that goal is going to be very hard to meet.
Thank you. Amy, I would like to try to, you know, kind of bring this conversation to a close at a reasonable hour here, so.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I just want to agree also with Councilmember Olson, that I think shorter sessions would be more beneficial for this group, partially because I know that self-reflection and this kind of self-work that we're going to be doing is, is tough. And I think we'll get more benefit out of it if we do shorter sessions. And like Councilmember Yates mentioned, that it's kind of more important, in my mind, about the duration of how long, you know, we're going to work through this issue. One-day crazy cram session is not going to be long-term beneficial for us. I think shorter period of time over a longer duration would, would be much better for us, for us. Excuse me. I do also would like to know that 100% of us are committed to being better and being open to feedback, and owning up to our part of making situations difficult at some time. I know I have contributed to that, and I would like to know that every one of us is committed to improving in our communications. And I know it's really hard sometimes to remain professional, when you're upset, or you're exhausted, or you feel attacked, but we need to all work on getting better at that, and being professional 100% of the time.
Rita?
That's it.
Thank you.
Just a couple of issues. And there is a reason that I did not respond to your email, and I was going to ask permission to speak with you tomorrow. I mean, there is dirty laundry, I don't want to air the dirty laundry. And, I mean, this whole thing kind of limits itself to that. And I thank you for admitting. Steve, I want to tell you how demoralizing what you did that night was. And I told the mayor that you owe council an apology for what you did. And I know that you get frustrated, but that was, that was over the top.
Thank you. Yeah, Steve, you can, you can comment now, I guess.
I, I, I will, and I wish Linda was here, I will apologize for the way I handled that situation. And I, I realize it was not professional. That frustration is, it came from being painted into a corner, night after night after night, meeting after meeting. And frankly, I have no problems in admitting when I do something wrong. I sure would like the same from the, the person who basically has done it to all of council, to admit that, admit to their actions, and ask for some atonement, or to apologize, or to even acknowledge that maybe they're not perfect, and that their actions has been extremely inappropriate, to the point that it, it is pushing this council apart, it's, it's tearing our community apart, it's, well, it's just made it living hell, you know?
Thank you, sir. Lorette?
For Rick, on the HIPAA, I was on the Colorado State Medical Services Board when HIPAA was passed. I'm very familiar with HIPAA. I was appointed on that board under Governor Owens, and there is no violation of HIPAA if the person who's medically involved discloses their stuff. It's in us asking for their medical stuff without them. So, there's been no violation of HIPAA, and it's no violation of our charter, or our ordinances, or interfering with the police or this administration to ask for a police report that is public information. Some of the rewriting the narrative of what's going on when things are not going well for other council people is your own frustration. And I deal with a great deal of frustration when I have people, citizens coming to me feeling frustrated that they don't think anybody's backing them up, that they don't have any other voice. And I am frustrated a lot. And yet, I didn't stoop to what you did, I didn't behave that way. And I am frustrated by a lot of people on council, some of the staff, when they're not answering questions, or giving information, or being upfront, or being thorough. Like the city manager brought up, when you've got to make a council request on something like the Paseo lighting three times, and still don't get an adequate answer, that's frustrating. It isn't a matter of just asking staff to go ahead and do something just for the sake of doing it. If you're not going to get a legitimate answer, and you have to ask again, then that's something that needs to be taken into account to say, why are they having to ask again? Maybe they didn't get the answer that they were looking for. I've, I'm pretty frustrated with a lot of the things that are going on, and a lot of, frustrated when somebody from council, like you had mentioned, gets berated, a citizen gets berated by somebody on council. It's very frustrating. I'm trying to do the very best job I can for them, and I have a lot of people out there that are telling me to stay strong, stay the course, and stay with what I am doing. They are my boss. I will deal with the level of frustration better myself. I believe that we can work together better. I'm, I'm trying. Sometimes I feel that no matter how much information I bring, no matter how much I research something, no matter how much I've looked into something, no matter how much I've communicated with the community, that just the mere fact that it's Lorette bringing it forward, you go, "I'm not going to listen to her." And I find that very frustrating. And so does, so does the community, because then I can't advocate for them properly, too. So, while I think we all have frustration in dealing with what's going on, I, we need to, I, I have a problem with you saying that I forced you into it. I forced you into being belligerent, and disswearing, into being that aggressive, into bullying, that I forced you into it, because nobody's forced me into it. I, I get just as frustrated. So, I'm looking forward to doing the meeting. I don't know what kind of genuflecting admission you want. I have already said that I'm willing to go ahead and, and, and try and work this out, that we all have things that we can do. I want to make sure that we're all working together for this.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate that. Honestly, I think I'm going to make one concluding comment, and we'll move on from this agenda item. Honestly, I, I think that was a relatively productive conversation with some people hearing each other out. I, honestly, this is a, a good launching point in my mind. I appreciate Mr. Keck bringing this forward with this proactive approach. I think when you've got these type of issues, you've got two options. You can let it fester, or you can deal with it directly. And I think we've done the right thing to have this difficult conversation in, in a public forum. I will say that, you know, I, it's not absolutely necessary to fix, but it will lead to better results for the entire community, in my mind. The one piece, I think I do have to disagree perhaps with Mr. Keck, and perhaps with some of the other comments that have been made tonight, is that not only can we get positives done, we are getting positives done. And, and, you know, I, I guess I just want to point out that we have a majority of council who was supportive and of a, a set of series of goals for this council during its two-year term. We had, in my mind, given that strategy and direction from council, I agree that the path has not been the easiest to walk. However, I think we know which direction we're heading. And so, you know, I will push back just a little bit on that. I, I think that the meeting with Kahoots, gosh, was that just last Monday? My gosh, that seems like forever ago. But in my mind, was one of the, I'll go ahead and say, it was the most positive meeting I've ever attended in this building. They hit on so many of the goals and objectives that this council agreed on, and I think can really make some lemonade, lemonade out of some lemons, and, and really highlight what we're doing well for our community, so that there is a source of pride and, and for our community, and, and hope for the future. So, thank you again for that, and I just wanted to share a couple of my thoughts there. I did hear some suggestion of, of handling public forum questions, public comment, I guess I should say, a little bit differently. I'm open to some discussion of that, or previous, or at our next sort of, uh, uh, meeting. I, I personally think it's a little bit more about self-policing than restricting elected officials on what questions they can ask. I just think that, you know, as a group, we're probably asking too many, but some of them probably need to be asked. But as a group, I think we could do a little bit better there. And so, perhaps we can think about that as a little bit more of a, a team dynamic. And the other thing that was brought up, I think, was rules of conduct. I think what we can also do with this meeting is also review our rules of conduct, and see if they need modification, and see if we can agree to some of those in that, in that forum. I've heard from several members that we also want to keep it brief. I heard from several members they'd be supportive of any. I heard two members who suggested they would be supportive of one, the gentleman who did the class up at CML. Unless there's an objection, I'm going to suggest that Eric contact this gentleman from CML, and try to get some direction as far as scheduling dates, costs, feedback on, you know, kind of council's preference, perhaps, to break it down into, into several sessions. That's all I had. Anything else, Eric?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. My computer has died. What is the next agenda item? Yes, City Attorney's Choice, thank you.
... letter from Beth May, so I just want to make sure everybody had it. And I'll be sending out a response with the information she's requesting this week.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I think we are adjourned. Good work, everyone. Thank you for sticking around a little bit late tonight.